This is a regular meeting of the Fairhaven Zoning Board of Adjustment. Adequate notice to this meeting has been given pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act. At the time of the board reorganization in January of this year, the board adopted its regular meeting schedule for the year. Notice the schedule was sent to and published in the Asbury Park Press on January twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty. It was definitely published in the Asbury Park Press and the two other times. That notice is also posted on the bulletin board in Borough Hall and has remained continuously posted there as required by the statute. Copy of the notice is and has been available to the public and is on file with the Office of the Department of Commerce. A copy of the notice has also been sent to such members of the public as have requested such information in accordance to the statute. Adequate notice having been given, the board secretary is directed to approve the statement in the minutes of the meeting. Before proceeding with the formal meeting tonight, I'd like to say a few words to the applicants or experts in the audience about the role and authority of the Fairhaven Zoning Board of Adjustment. The board is a separate and independent municipal legal entity and its limited authority is specifically set forth in Borough ordinances and the New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law. It's quasi judicial in nature and the members of the board are unpaid volunteers appointed by the mayor and council. The zoning board does not enact the borough land use laws and regulations, the Borough Council does that. The zoning board does not enforce the land use laws of the borough of Fairhaven. This is their responsibility, the borough could enforce it in an officer. This board deals with appeals for release from the requirement of the borough's land use laws or denials by the zoning officer. An applicant is never entitled to a variance, also known as an exception to the zoning regulations, but must meet specific criteria required by the New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law and the Fairhaven ordinances by satisfying certain required standards approved. The board has no authority to waive these requirements. The written proof is always on the applicant to show that he or she is entitled to the specifically requested. The applicant must prove that a deviation from the regulations will advance the purposes of the ordinance and that deviation would substantially outweigh any detriment to the design plan. Variants is related to the future use of the land and are not intended or authorized to remedy temporary or unique personal situations. Roll call, please.
Mr. Natchezing?
Here.
Ms. DeAngelo? Here. Mr. Vergey?
Here.
Mr. Fordthing?
Here.
Mr. Loffer?
Here.
Mr. Chavetti?
Here.
Mr. Leder?
Here. Please join me at some point.
...... which stands one nation under our individual liberty and justice rule.
Okay. Since everyone's here for the Giero matter, so we're gonna call Mr. Giero first.
So I'm sure to testify to give the board the truth and I can put up with the truth.
I do.
Okay. Just state your name for the record, it's probably your last name. Sit back, do the right thing.
Intimidate all two bucks, back over there. I'm sorry, just give us your name and your address for the record.
Yes, Sean Giero, last name spelled G.A.I.E.R.O. Address is eight Hendrickson Place.
So, um, so Mr. Giero, I, I understand that the, the board had previously granted an approval for a modification to your house renovation and you were looking for the board to extend the deadline for starting construction. Um, I believe you submitted a letter to the board, didn't you?
Yes. Let's see, in, I believe, twenty-twenty-three?
Okay. So the, as I'm understanding the, the situation, the, the, did you previously get an extension?
Uh huh. Yeah.
Okay, so there was one extension previously granted for the benefit of the board. Uh, Mr. Giero has not started his project. The extension of the year has passed, there was some confusion over the summer when the board secretary was transferring over with regard to the request for the extension. Mr. Giero is now requesting not a twelve-month extension, but an eighteen-month extension uh, of the time to, to proceed. Uh, you had asked whether or not you needed to be here, you didn't need to be here, but I told you that you could be here to the extent that the board members had any questions. Um, you know that a few of these had come up over the summer. Um, for a variety of reasons, we've seen a number of these in recent, um, in recent months, frankly. Um, and so the, the basic request is for the board to extend the period. Everybody knows that when we grant an approval, it expires after a certain period of time. Um, we're entitled to grant an extension to that time period and so to the extent that anyone has concerns about extending the time period, then we should have that discussion to the extent that everybody feels that the extension's okay. Uh, that we don't need to do anything more than just take a vote with regard to the extension.
And we just amplify for purposes in record that the original approval was granted in February four, twenty-twenty-one. The request that we have to Sandy was June first, twenty-twenty-three for the extension of the February four, like, excuse me, first granted February four, twenty-twenty-one, and extension was granted June second, twenty-twenty-two. Uh, new pretun, fancy Latin for this or then. Um, they moved it back because I think you would pass the tolerance to do those things, but as we've commented, which Mr. Giero has done. The request, as I said, now is May, June first, twenty-twenty-three. The only difficulty that I have, I, I think your ordinance says that you can only grant an extension for one year. That doesn't mean that you can't come back for another extension. We encourage you to want to do that, to do that before that year has lapsed. And I think, I don't think there's any reason why the board, even though the request was made in June of twenty-twenty-three, why you can't make it effective as of this date, which will also give you some time.
Yeah, as a practical matter, the eighteen month you were looking for was gonna begin when the old, um, time period lapsed, so effectively you would have uh, an additional twelve months from like, like January. So to January twenty-five, effectively. So, so you think procedurally, the request should be to grant the extension from today's date of Washington, the time that elapsed to, to line up with your ordinance?
The, the language is fairly, fairly succinct that in a sense, it, the variance release, and that's what you really concerns with, the variance really vanishes after that time period. But the board only has the ability to grant it for a one-year period.
Okay. Anybody have questions or wanna have some discussion with regard to the, the situation, why we would or why we wouldn't wanna grant the extension? Saying nothing but puzzle books, does anybody wanna make a move?
No, I'll make a motion to extend, I don't see, given the fact that there's no extending in terms, there were no, uh, change to the plan that was submitted. Um, and everything's still in situ, I, I don't think there's any reason why we wouldn't be able to grant this. So I'll make a motion to grant the extension for twelve months, starting as of this date.
I'll second it.
Does it matter if you voted for it?
Oh, that's a dumb question. I'm sorry. That's a good question.
Does it matter if you voted for the resolution or not, or against?
Um.
So I honestly don't.
You know, I, I don't think it matters at this point, tell them for the extension, I think that would be different with regard to the original approval, but I don't think for the extension.
It, I, I, I would think if there is a reason for recusal, you may wanna recuse yourself to the board.
That, if you have a conflict.
But otherwise, I think it's simply procedural. Alright, so we've got a, a better motion, we've got a second, any further discussion? Roll call when you're ready, sure.
Mr. Natchezing?
Yes.
Ms. DeAngelo? Yes. Mr. Vergey?
Yes.
Mr. Fordthing?
Yes.
Captain Loffer?
Yes.
Mr. Chavetti?
Yes.
Mr. Leder?
Yes. Okay.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, uh, we are ready for Mad Five Fifty River Road.
Great, so they have a great hall of works out. We spread it out. They may as well testify, I think they wanna testify, may have something to testify to. Anybody who walked the paths also. So I'm sure there's anyone who can pull through, nothing but the screen. Oh, yeah, I do. Before you start testifying, please state your names, on the record, so we can tell you who's speaking on the report.
It's all about, for all of you, right, who is here?
Okay.
It's in the back.
Great, with your permission, I have some additional exhibits to mark.
Please do, thank you, it's correct.
Um, we have received, uh, insight update, the response from the engineers, comments, and the cover letter of January eighteen, inclusive, and I'll mark this as A fifteen, inclusive of the inside revised drawings uh, revised to January seventeen, twenty-twenty-four, consisting of eight sheets. In addition, in the tab. Several documents relating to, uh, well, I'll just mark the we just marked the Fairhaven Zoning Board of Adjustment, December seventeenth, nineteen sixty-three, uh, resolution of approval as ZB, uh, zoning board three on the Markley-Mamba County Development Review Committee Report dated, um, let's see, I'll give it a received by, by their office on November eleventh, twenty-twenty-three, and the action taken on December eleven, twenty-twenty-three, mark that as ZB zoning board, uh, eleven. Going to mark the ZB four. ZB four. ZB four, yes, thank you. Yes, sir. Going to mark, uh, the very comprehensive, uh, planners' report dated January hundred and three, twenty-twenty-four, as ZB, as zoning board five. Going to mark the, uh, CME, January thirty-one, twenty-twenty-four, uh, third, engineering review letter, signature of Will Rizzo. I'll mark that as zoning board six. Um, don't know if you have any other exhibits that you want to add?
Um, yes, I have a series of, uh, updates, I've got, uh, a Google Earth with the, uh, superposed device site layout, we're gonna call that, uh, A sixteen. That's, uh, prepared by Insights Engineering, and in February one, twenty-twenty-four. A sixteen. And the other, Mr. Fisher's gonna pass that around, follow up. Great, right, yes, uh, I have a smaller scale version of A sixteen which is called Neighborhood Exhibit, the A seventeen. A seventeen. Neighborhood Exhibit. Pass those around to. I also have a series of, and, uh, these would be maybe we'll hold on these just because, um, they are smaller versions of plans prepared by Anderson Campanella. The architecturals, the above plan, the elevations, et cetera. Those haven't been marked yet, so, uh, maybe we can hold on that, but, yeah. At this time.
You good with exhibit?
Big one?
You're good with exhibits?
Good with exhibits for the moment, yes, Joe.
So, Mr. Frank, I'd like to, I'd like to politely indulge me because I've had an opportunity to kind of reflect on the last hearing and kind of where we started and kind of where we went. We, we had an opportunity to speak about the site, we had an opportunity to hear from some of the residents. It occurs to me that the way that, at least I, view this application um, is that we have a nineteen sixty-eight resolution to put a commercial bank in what was and is a residential zone. You have an approval, you have the right to use and occupy as a bank. To the extent that the applicant was coming in tonight and asking simply to change the use, it would seem to me that we could have a discussion about the change in the use and it would really start with whether or not we're in compliance with the sixty-eight resolution today, whether or not it's currently, or whether or not there's going to be an agreement that we will be in compliance. The issues that we lead into with regard to the lighting, with regard to the parking and restriping, and how we're gonna deal with entrances and the exits, they are, in my mind, secondary to the fundamental issue of adapting this property for reuse through the opportunity to expand the condition of the resolution that this is gonna be used only as a bank. There are site layout issues, clearly this was designed in order to accommodate the requirement for stacking in relation to drive fleets. But what I found in, in kind of where we wound up last time, particularly with the neighbors' interests and understanding how this is all gonna go down, it, it, it has the potential, in my mind, to complicate what I think is the, the paramount issue, which is the, the, the change of use in light of the fact that this is an existing facility that is built, it is commercial, it has been in existence, at least it has been permitted for sixty-five years.
Yes.
And the newer standards, I think, all need to be discussed, and I, I'm sure that there are things that you're proposing to do that would make sense and the board's gonna wanna hear about. I know that we have good planners' reports now and we've had multiple sets of plans that have been reviewed. But I wanted to encourage you to at least consider, starting with something related to what you have today and having some discussion about what the new users are gonna be, or proposed to be, relative to the zoning standards relating to parking and other things and how the site accommodates that, so that we try and get that kind of, at least understood. Um, and I know that there's proposal for a second user um, which may, you know, may weigh on discussions about the striping and the parking and some of those other things. But I, I, I just at least wanted to start by sharing with you what my thoughts were, um, so that you could consider, um, at least, at least considering, you know, working through this and that.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. Ladies and gentlemen, Mark Aitkins on behalf of the applicant, good evening, nice to see you all. Um, we were last here, I think on December seventh, if I remember correctly, right? Um, and yes, we had talked through and identified that, um, the purpose here was to provide a less intense, significantly less intense adaptive reuse of this property that has been a commercial property for six decades, for more than six decades, absolutely. And so we were trying to formulate, uh, some of the site details based upon the neighbors' comments, which I think was a good place to start because we've got a sixty-year-old site plan, right? Um, and, uh, I agree, we don't wanna get too mired into site details, uh, but we also wanted to, um, have the opportunity to incorporate those comments with, which Mr. Fisher has done in his plans. So what I was gonna do this evening was I was gonna take just a couple of minutes, literally a couple of minutes, have Mr. Fisher tell you what he's revised as, as is reflected in, in, uh, his plan, starting with A fifteen. Uh, then bring up, um, Mr. Duffy, who's one of the principals of the applicant and who will be the principal tenant. In fact, little bit of an update, the, uh, second floor tenant that we had contemplated, um, also making a presentation, will not be proceeding to lease that space. So it's more likely to be a sublease, um, through Mr. Duffy, who's gonna take the entire building at this point. So his testimony will be very important, I think, for the board's consideration this evening. So a little bit of an update there that was gonna lead us to. So if we could have two minutes just to have Mr. Fisher review that. Um, I have some beautiful architecturals to review and floor plans, but maybe that makes more sense in the context of understanding what's gonna go, what's proposed to go on with this less intense adaptive reuse of this sixty-year-old commercial use. Right, because if we, if we wanna, just wanna tear it down and make residential lots, we don't need to be here, right? And I don't think anybody's proposing that, so. Mr. Fisher, um, I remind you, you're under oath, I wonder if you can take a moment and just update the board?
One second, sure, please. If we don't know what's gonna be on the second floor of the building, is that something that we'd have to come back for another discussion of the use?
So the, the approval that's in place was for a single user as a bank. The applicant is originally proposed to tenants, first floor, second floor. It sounds like the applicant is now proposing to have the ability to bring in a second tenant and they're gonna explain to you why they think that that's reasonable. But the, the, the decision will be weighed based on, you know, all the various issues that, that come out and the use and parking and all the other things, so. And I think the proposal is that they would have the right to bring two tenants into this space.
Okay. Um, I'm just asking because we're here to talk about a new use of the property and part of that, we don't know what it.
It's certainly two tenants of that type of use, so if the second tenant comes in.
So it would have to be the same type of.
It's a completely different use with different parking requirements and things like that, it would have to be reconsidered.
Okay. Thank you. Well, well, wait a minute, so, Mr. Frank, what, what you said was that the, the upstairs tenant would be a subtenant or the prime tenant, but the, the old, the former second tenant was a similar use, but are you proposing, in fact, two users of the same category and, and a discussion about the, the usage?
It could be an, it could be an expansion of Mr. Duffy's business or we'd like to reserve the right to have a, an independent subtenant of Mr. Duffy for the second floor, which would be a complimentary use, that's what's anticipated.
I, I think the question from the, from the board is, how will they know how that may impact parking? I mean, you, you, depending on what your use is on the second floor.
Right, well, let's, if, I could get you there through Mr. Duffy, if you'll, if you'll give me the opportunity, yeah.
Okay, shall I? We should see.
Oh, oh, good?
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, no problem, okay, alright, here we go. So, um, we made some revisions to the plan that, that, um, we resubmitted to you and those revisions are all related to the discussion that we had in December when we were here, so I'll just tick those off for you briefly. The first is, we show on the revised plans ground mounted up lights for both the flagpole and the freestanding sign in front of the building. We reduced the driveway width, we call it the eastern driveway on River Road, so as you look at the plan, it's the one on the right. We reduced the width of that driveway by fourteen point six feet, which brings it down now to thirty-two point two five feet wide. And that width was established as the minimum to accommodate a vehicle exiting the ADA space. It improves the streetscape, makes a safer driveway, and it reduces the impervious on the property. As far as the impervious goes, the existing lot today is seventy-one point six percent. Our original plan brought that down to seventy point seven. And then by narrowing the driveway down even further to sixty-eight point nine. We also changed the dimension of parallel parking spaces. Uh, the first parallel parking space on the revised plan, so that would be, um, I'll call it the eastern parallel parking space or planned right parallel parking space, that is seven by eighteen. If you recall, in the prior plan, they would be parallel spaces with seven by twenty-two. The request was to widen them to eight by twenty-two. So we did that with the other parallel spaces, but the easternmost parallel space is only eighteen feet long because it's not really a parallel space, you could pull straight in from it. And we left it at seven feet because that allows adequate aisle width for the other nine spaces facing River Road, uh, to function in accordance with the ordinance. The other three, uh, as I said, the other three spaces are eight by twenty-two, uh, and that's what we discussed last month. We're still providing the same number of parking spaces and the parking requirement did not change because the building hasn't changed. There is, um, square footage on the second floor, the architect will give us a square footage, it's, it's, I think it's just shy of four hundred fifty square feet that is not usable due to mechanicals. So that if we were to, just hypothetically, bear with me here, if we were to remove that mechanical space from the parking calculation, we would require sixteen point three parking spaces, which I believe by your ordinance would mean seventeen. But your ordinance, uh, doesn't really do that, so that's why our plan said that nineteen are requiring, we counted that mechanical space. You'll hear more about that from the architect, about how that space is completely unusable. So, not necessarily saying that we should eliminate it from the calculation, it's more in support of the variance. Where, where is the, um, where did the number come from? Does it come from the specific type of use, or does it come from the zone? Um, where, where's the number?
The parking calculation is the use out of your ordinance. It was like studio, fitness studios, or whatever, yeah.
And, and is there, i- in, in contemplating what might go upstairs, is there, i- is there a single standard regardless of use, do they, do they vary widely? We know you're not gonna be a bank, but if there was a, a lawyer's office there, would the parking, would the parking be lesser, would be the same? So what we did, as, as Mr. Aitkins alluded to, um, the intention is to make what the applicant will call a health and wellness center, you know, hence Mr. Duffy and a complimentary use. But they also would like to, just in terms of, they would like to fill the building, obviously, so they wanted to leave the door open for professional office, which is also permitted in the B one, I'll get into more of that in planning, but it's not B one. I know it's not B one, I, I'm gonna, I'll tie all that together for you when I go through planning, but in terms of B one, the studio and the, um, professional office would be permitted, so they wanted to leave the door open to that. So on our plans in the parking chart, we list, um, the studio and we list professional office. Professional office parking demand is actually less than the studio. So if it was to flip flop between the two, we were hoping that if you did see fit to approve that the door would be open to both. Again, the applicant's goal is to make this health and wellness, they just wanted to leave the door open for small office space, and you'll see when the architect goes through the floor plans, if, if there's office space here, it's gonna be very small. Mr. Duffy's taking the bulk of the area.
Mr. Fisher, for purposes of clarification, is your testimony that parking requirement is based on specific use and there's not an alternate calculation based upon total square footage?
So the parking calculation is based on square footage depending on the use. So what we did is we evaluated both, the studio and the office. The studio is more intensive, so that covered, that's the number we use. If for some reason, a professional office user wanted to take space here and, and you were to approve that, the parking demand would actually go down, so the approval could, could hold, in support of it.
Just to clarify for the board, the, the use is pretty general, it's studio, um, but the ordinance calls it studio dash art, music, dance, gymnastics for the purpose of giving instruction, and that's one per every two hundred. And then Mr. Fisher's point, office is four spaces per one thousand, so one per two fifty, so you're right, it would go down. The parking would better go down for an office use.
Jordan, what I wanna understand is, what, what's the range? What, what, what's the smallest amount of parking required for a commercial user, and what's the largest? And I, I'm just trying to understand how much it could deviate to the extent that the applicant is requesting some flexibility, and I understand that Mr. Fisher is talking about two specific types of use, but I, I'm trying to get some context for, for what that.
The, the studio use, again, is, is a little general, but that's sixteen spaces required. Um, the office use would require fourteen point seven five, so we'll ground.
If it were all offices?
Ground fifteen, so it's one less.
That's virtually the same.
So other users in the commercial zone, do they fall within those brackets? Do I have a high and a low there, or are there other?
I'm, I'm so, I'm sorry to interrupt, nineteen spaces is required for the studio sixteen I proposed. The office would be fifteen, so it's a reduction of four, which is the difference of complying versus not complying.
The documents say personal fitness studio, is that not delineated under this?
I think it's left general, um, especially because it says for the purpose of giving instruction. And I think that, 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 that's, that's, that's.
So personal fitness isn't a real thing in and of itself, it's just not, or how it's still, okay. We're gonna provide testimony for, for Duffy, yes, in the very personal nature of the instruction, so this is not just the, the gym that you go to and you're you'll see from his testimony, you'll hear from his testimony that it's personalized one-on-one instruction, which will then support the parking determination that Mr. Fisher has positive.
Jordan, how many, how many handicap parking spaces would be required?
One per twenty-five, that would be one.
Even for a quasi rehab institution?
Um, I believe so, yeah.
I didn't have anything further, Mr. Fisher?
Yeah, well, I got, I got more changes.
Okay. You want to say something? Okay. Another thing that came up at the last hearing that's been added to the plans is we show site triangles at both River Road driveways and they prove to provide adequate site distance. We were also requested to eliminate a light pole in the middle of the parking lot along River Road, which we did, and also add in the existing streetlights that are out there, and we did that. So that's been accomplished. The fence, there was some discussion about the fence along the southern or rear property line. Uh, we put a note on the plan that that fence will be replaced with a six-foot tall woodstock eight fence, which essentially would say, so it'd be a new, new lane uh, stable, uh, fence there.
Is the fence now, is, is it now on the proper boundary line, because it looks like before, I think we talked about, there's a little bit of a gore here in the survey from where it was to where it should be. It looked like the line deviates from.
Yeah, the fence is on the applicant's property, but there, there is that one spot, I think we talked about where the property line jobs. That is much on the applicant's property, at least none of it's on a neighbor's property.
Right.
But yeah, the intention was to follow that same line.
Okay.
Alright, there was a comment from a neighbor about lights in the western drive-through. Uh, so we show on the plans that those are gonna be removed and replaced with downlights, but that's really. But that's really, um, on a portion of the building that goes over the top of the driveway, so that's an architectural thing. Those lights will be on your architectural plans, but we made a note on the site plan, remove the existing lights and replace them with new downlights to protect that neighbor. We added a note on sheet C six hundred that lights are to be turned off one hour after business. And also from, uh, eight P M to five A M, the lights would be off. We added some detail on the freestanding sign detail on sheet C seven hundred. Shows dimensions of the shop, sign also shows dimensions of the letters. And then to another neighbor's comment, we supplemented, um, the existing vegetation at the south. Which is adjacent to one of our neighbors, we added three evergreen shrubs, whoops, if you look at, like, I forget what it's, this is. A sixteen, A sixteen, bottom left corner of the property or south. West corner of the property, we'll see three proposed evergreen shrubs there. So those were the changes that were made to the plan in response to, uh, last year's discussion from the board and from the board.
Mr. Fisher, can I just clarify one thing for the, uh, the board here? You mentioned your reduction in previous coverage to a new proposed total.
Sixty-eight point nine?
Sixty-eight point nine percent, correct. Um, on your site plans, which would be called A fifteen. Uh, you show additional concrete side wall being removed in the northwest corner of the building. It's shown on A sixteen as remaining, so I just want to clarify if you're removing sidewalk.
That is coming out.
Yes, good catch. So that plus the driveway gets you down to the sixty-eight point nine, which that's right. All right, thank you. And then the three shrubs you're proposing in southwest corner. Uh, will you agree to remove the existing bench that's there?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So I want to ask you about the sixty-eight resolution, because the fence is required by the sixty-eight resolution. And so you, you've noted your plans that you're gonna replace it, but to me. This starts with being in compliance with sixty-eight resolution. So what, what I would have assumed would have been that there would have been a stipulation. That all of those conditions are gonna be satisfied, they're gonna be checked. And they're gonna all be brought up to date to the extent that they're not in compliance. One of the issues in that resolution, for example, was that the entire parking lot was gonna be pitched. To River Road, as I recall, uh, which is a significant issue given the problems that we have with flooding and plumbing of the port. But the fact that you separately identified the fence. Am I misunderstanding what you would expect to do with the sixty-eight resolution with regard to compliance with those conditions?
Well, no, I think it's an update of that sixty-year-old, sixty-five-year-old condition.
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six.
Well, well, that's a, because the resolution says that the fence is supposed to be installed. The, the resolution says the fence is supposed to be installed and maintained.
Yes.
It, it's certainly not currently maintained.
So the proposal is to put it in it.
Right, and I'm wondering about the stuff that you didn't mention, I, I'm wondering whether or not you are, you are. If planning to make sure that you comply with these things, or whether or not we need to make sure that we've reviewed it for those issues and talk about them. That's, that's why I'm not.
If we want to go through the conditions of that resolution, happy to do that. Didn't sound like that was the direction you wanted us to go, and you wanted more as to the use, use, but if you want to talk about those conditions, that's perfectly fine.
I, I actually would just prefer that there be a stipulation that all the conditions of the sixty-eight resolution would be satisfied. And that you tell us to the extent that you won't, for example, your landscaping may be different. So i- it, it may well be that there are logical things that you want to change. But I'm, I'm worried about chasing things that are supposed to be maintained a certain way, when it was originally agreed that this could be built.
Well, it catches us at a little bit of a disadvantage, right? Because if you say, well, it's supposed to drain this way and it's existed sixty years and it drains differently. Obviously, the intention isn't to repitch the entire parking lot here, right? Tear up the parking lot, repitch it.
Okay, um, but it was important when the approval was granted that the water not go backwards. And so maybe there's another way that that can be accommodated. When I asked Mr. Fisker last time, he told me he didn't know if it was pitched properly or not. And I'm not asking you whether you know today. But I, I am sure that when in nineteen sixty-eight the approval was granted, it was important. And I'm having trouble starting with a concept that anything that's fallen out of the way it was supposed to be. Should be allowed to, to remain inconsistent with what it was supposed to be.
One thing I said, uh, last time we're here when I was asked about the drainage, somebody asked a question, might have been you. Does the property drain south towards Columbia Port? And I said it can't because there's a curve back there, so it can't go that way.
Okay, so, I, I don't know how everybody else feels, and we can just wait until the end, but, but just know that I feel fairly strongly. That this was built based on a certain agreement that certain things were gonna be done. And if we're building off of that, that's absolutely fine, but it's certainly important to me. That either we're satisfying those original conditions or there's a specific reason that we're not, that makes more sense today. Um, to the extent that the board's granting an approval.
I, I do think it's fair, and I asked Mr. Kovats to opine on this, that if there was a C of O that was issued, I presume resolution compliance. Would have been achieved at that time. Now, maybe fences have fallen and disrepair. But I presume the fundamental conditions that were attached to the original resolution fifty-six years ago.
Don't want to assume that.
I'm not, I'm not assuming it, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, I'm just saying that that's a fair presumption. Now, we can drill down and go through, I have no, I have no issue going through it point by point. But I also asked the board to take judicial notice. That when a C of O was issued for this building, that it could not have been issued under any of its codes, especially Fairhaven's codes. Without achieving resolution compliance back in that day.
I would, I would agree on general principles without having seen the issuance of it. Sometimes you get temporaries that get lost in the wind. It may be beneficial for the parties just to simply go through, and I think you did get a copy of the resolution.
Right.
Highlight the conditions, I mean, it, some of them are probably not going to be applicable, some may be applicable, some may be approved on five.
Maybe we can save that for last, that would be a great discussion to have.
That may be the go, wouldn't that be a favorable discussion to have if we need to address that? That would be wonderful.
No, it definitely would, I, just one other thing, right, so the people that lived on Colonial appealed this, right? And I don't know if anyone else saw, they appealed this, and it, the main thrust, as they put it in here, of the appeal was the grading and the drainage. So that's the only reason this is such a, it's a hot button issue, right, there's. Essentially, half the block of Colonial at the time came before the board and appealed this decision. Specifically because of the drainage.
What, what do you mean by, what, what do you mean by appeal? You mean came to the hearing and objected, or you filed a case to overturn the approval?
So on December seventeen. Uh, recommendation of the zoning board and adjustment to the mayor council, Barrow, Ferryman, E. P. Philip Egger, O. Von Garen, Carolyn von Garen, Lotten, Block Thirty-Green. Burton, Duremas, Virginia, Duremas, John, Duremas.
They, they, they appealed to the council.
Yeah.
Correct, yeah.
To overturn the approval altogether?
To, uh, denying, the public appeal was made to the zoning board from the decision of the building inspector, denying the application as being in violation. And then.
The, the way I read that was that I was the appeal of the zoning officers denial. Which resulted in the December seventeen nineteen sixty-eight resolution, with the conditions numbering. I committed it differently, numbering one through.
Through.
Seventeen, dealing with everything from.
Okay, my apologies, but it does say here that.
Yeah, it does, and I think that, I think that was the term of art at that time, was the appeal of the zoning officers.
Okay.
And within those seventeen conditions, you dealt with fence, you dealt with fighting, with lighting, you dealt.
Grading.
Hill and vines, signage, green. That's right. It's a fair reading what was presented to you, but I, I think it may have been a term of art at that point.
I'm looking at the existing photography on the plans, uh, the division two plans, most current, not that existing change, but I'm, I'm looking on there. Uh, and Jordan, feel free to. You see something different, but it looks to me that the grades generally pitch. Towards River Road, it's a relatively flat site, you know, where there's wet hairs, but it does. Generally, uh, all the pavement slopes toward River Road. Little bit to Smith, which is always the case with the driveway. Not much goes to Smith, and then it heads off, uh, west and north to River Road. There's a high point behind the bank in the drive-through. So the, the water will run off left and right from the plant and then get out to River Road.
So it's clear, I, I, I have not been asking for you to prove it tonight. What I've been asking is to get an understanding of whether or not it would be reasonable to expect. That the sixty-eight resolution would be satisfied to the extent that it is in fact. I don't want there to be confusion about what I was suggesting. Um, I totally understand if you don't know the answer to some of the questions.
Fair enough. Certainly, I would hope there'd be time and a conclusion that you can go through those each and every one. To remove any ambiguity. Anything else, Mr. Fisher?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. Applicant calls, Mike Duffy. Let's see, come on up.
My name is Mike Duffy, last name is spelled D U F F Y.
Good evening, Mr. Duffy, I wonder if you can take a moment to tell the board a little bit about, um. Your personal background, your business, and your vision for this facility at five fifty River Road.
Yes, very good. Um, I currently operate two personal training, uh, centers. Um, personal training centers aren't regular gyms, um, it's one-on-one instruction, you have virtual trainers. That work with your clients one-on-one. Um, all appointments, um, all sessions are done by appointment only. Um, clients are not allowed in the facility unless seven point was a trainer, that would be supervised by a trainer. So if we have three clients in the facility, it'd be three trainers work with them one-on-one and receptions. Um, very private business, very similar to a, a one-on-one physical therapy. Um, and that's the nature of the business that I would like to put in this location. Um, my intent is to move. My location from Little Silver, which has been there for fifteen years, into this building because I can be part owner of the building. And I'm renting Little Silver, prefer to own the real estate that I have a business in.
What would your days and hours of operation?
We're open seven days a week, um, Monday through Friday, the hours of operation are five A M to seven P M. Although Friday we close, close to five P M. Uh, Saturday and Sunday are open from seven A M to one P M. Those are the hours of operation.
Okay. And how many employees would you anticipate having? Uh, let's start with the first floor.
So, um, the amount of employees we have at our current facility are two full-time employees, personal trainers, four part-time personal trainers. And four administrative, um, workers who run the front desk. Um, those are all part-time positions.
So, I, let's, let's take my, my situation, so for example, I want so much, I, I wanna. Increase my physique and I, two hundred pounds isn't enough, and I really want to get beefed up. What do I do? Walk me through the process for me to become a client of yours. And once I am a client, what am I looking at when I walk through your doors at five fifty River Road?
So, um, first you come out, fill out an application, um, you go through your medical. Um, you go through your goals and your previous workout history, and then, um, we'll design a program to help you get your goal. Um, and then I give it to your trainer and give him the program, and it would take you through it two hours a week. Um, where they would just add your weights, like your exercise to do, make you do the top of the point. Um, stretch you before and after the workout, that's basically, very simple.
Now, you said two hours a week, does that mean I come in for two, one-hour sessions or one, two-hour sessions?
Not two, or hour, either half hour, thirty minutes, sixty minutes.
So that's the extent of my, of my exercise sessions?
Okay.
And if I just want to show up, if I had, if I had a great lift on Monday and I want to come back on Tuesday, but I don't have an appointment, what happens then?
You, well, you can't email yourself an appointment.
I can't come in unless asked.
If you call up and say, like, appointment today, if I can have a trainer available, I have a treat, but that really doesn't happen too often.
Okay, so it's purely by appointment?
And how many at one time, say, in an hour, how many trainers would you have in place?
So, um, currently based on last year's numbers, um, two thousand twenty-three, we run about four hundred and one average sessions per month. Which comes out to about thirteen a day. At any one given hour, most people. Uh, most trainers I have on any given one hour would be four trainers at one hour. Um, maybe once a day, that doesn't happen too often.
Yeah, so I'm trying to get a feel for the amount of parking that's gonna be used at any time and people coming and going.
Actually, we have four trainers, four clients, it's eight, that's, that's nine people. Um, that's like the heaviest load, I would say, drop a day. Um, but again, we're averaging like thirteen visits a day.
So under no circumstances can I come in and work out. Even if I. Had a trainer previously, under no circumstances can I come in and work out without having an appointment.
Not at all, the facility size is not big enough to allow people to do that. Um, for us, a small facility for our business model is much better. Um, as opposed to trying to get a huge place and shove as many people as possible.
That business model has been developed over your fifteen years.
Yeah, I've been, yeah, I've been a little so for fifteen years, with the location, I'm now location Ocean Township where I've been twenty-six years. Um, and that's kind of our model, it works really well for us. It's priced in order to, to keep that way, we keep away from like high volume and just try and keep showing people the doors. Um, our prices are much different than a regular gym, so a regular gym, it's, uh, based on volume, runs anywhere from ten dollars a month to fifty dollars a month. Um, our average membership runs around six hundred and forty dollars per month. Um, so there's fewer people who want to pay that price and come and work with us.
Is it fair to say these are people who are very committed to a disciplined form of exercising?
Without a doubt, they're, you know, at those rates, the people are very serious about what they're doing.
I can imagine, okay. Um, how about, um, is, is a microphone used or loud music or what? You know, that's always a concern for neighbors and obviously everybody here, so tell us about that aspect of your business, Mr. Duffy.
We don't use microphones, and the music is not played loud, the music's not the key to the business. It's more a private setting, one-on-one, you want to be able to hear conversations that you're working, you know, trainers and clients. Uh, most of our clients are average age, your client's like fifty, fifty-five, but you're not, you're older, you don't really appreciate the loud music. That's the music situation that we use.
Can a trainer deal with multiple clients at the same time?
Um, right now, our business model, ninety percent of what we do is one-on-one. Um, we have a small percentage where there might be two people, one client at one time, um, that might be about three to five percent of our business.
Tell the board if you would please, Mr. Duffy, what you might, uh, be able to utilize the seconds for, for relative to. What you've just described happening on the first floor.
Um, so, I told my partner Andrew that, um, since we lost the person who's interested in leasing from us. Um, that I would like to expand upstairs in the future, not right away, because this is a big move for us. We're rolling from sixteen hundred square foot facility in Little Silver to twenty-five hundred square foot on the bottom floors of this building. Um, our rent will be a little higher, and I didn't want to, uh, put any stress on the business to take that extra space upstairs. However, um, I would hope that the business would grow and be able to use it upstairs, um, to put more equipment in and different types of training.
I'm sorry. Tom, alert, can you repeat that again, what's the size of the facility, year and then?
Right now, in Little Silver, it's about fifteen hundred square foot, and, yeah, total, and, and then we're moving into this space, which is twenty-five hundred square foot. Um, if you've been in our facility in Little Silver, it's very crowded, very little space in between equipment, and this allows us to be able to have more space in between equipment. And again, to be part owner of the building, the top of rent.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Chairman, board members, no further questions, Mr. Duffy.
Mr. Duffy, I, so I assume there's no activities outside?
I think on nice days, there may, might be a trainer who'll take the client outside to run, um, or do some work in parking lot, um, but not a huge focus.
What, what?
No equipment outside.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I missed it.
Okay, there's no equipment outside in your locations.
So what sort of things would be done? If you're running, you would run from the facility around the block?
Yeah, it'd be on sidewalk, around block, um.
So would the, would the parking lot be used for anything in particular?
No. We have, we have a lot, um, in Little Silver now, which is in the front, not at all. But again, you know, sometimes on a nice day, you're gonna take somebody outside, put a mat on the ground, having to push ups or sit-ups and things like that, just to take advantage of the nice weather. But again, it doesn't happen at all.
So, Mr. Fisk, the, the proposal with regard to the parking spaces is assuming it's all studio, I think is what the, the. The category, right?
That would be the most intensive, yes.
So nineteen spaces is required for the twenty-five hundred square foot first floor, plus the use of the second story. For the same use by the same single user. Would the parking requirements change? If there were two separate tenants versus one tenant using the same minus four foot?
No, if anything, it would go down if it were just a professional office inside.
The parking requirements are gonna.
If it's a different use?
Because what I'm assuming is if there's a different tenant. That even though the calculations for the space might be different, that Mr. Duffy's explanation of how he's gonna use the space, for example. Certainly not going to have a second receptionist, because you've got somebody shooting upstairs.
You, you'll see, Chairman, pardon me, from, again, when we bring up Mr. Anderson, he testified, so you'll see there's a second, separate, there's a separate entrance for the second floor. So that would be, that would be preserved. If we're talking about potentially an office, a less intense use at that one to two hundred and fifty. Standard, then, you know, and you'll hear us to the square footage, I think we're basically talking about a single person upstairs. If it's an office.
That second entrance currently exists, Mr. Higgins?
Uh, I believe it exists, but I also believe it's, it's, uh, you can access the first floor through that second entrance.
It, it, it seems to me, and we can, we can dive into it more.
I'll have Mr. Anderson answer the question.
It, it, it seems to me that if, if Mr. Duffy uses the whole thing, that the intensity of the use with regard to parking is one thing. There's a second tenant using upstairs, that it is, it is logical to me that the parking would be more intensively used as a result of there being a second tenant. Um, I, I wanna ask a question specifically about Mr. Duffy's testimonies, how he's gonna use it. Because my guess is that you're not looking for the board to approve Mr. Duffy. But rather for this site to be used for a studio, which would probably include people doing it Mister, different than Mr. Duffy. And it would be more intensive. So for example, we just throw gym equipment in there and we treat it like. The purple and yellow place, whatever that thing is. Is that correct?
No, I don't think that we're seeking it quite as broadly. Mr. Duffy's gonna be an owner of the facility, so he's not merely just a tenant and a user, he's a co-owner.
So, so then the idea is you're looking for approval for Mr. Duffy's use realistically?
That's, that's correct. With regard to the first floor and then reserving the right to have perhaps an office, a less intense parking requirement. In the event that he decides, as he testified, not to pursue use of the second.
Okay, so then theoretically, it's possible that the board is being asked to commit to a single user in perpetuity, so that the, the. The property owner would need to come back to change the first floor tenant from Mr. Duffy, but flexibility on the second floor. To use the building with multiple tenants within a particular category. That, that's what you're asking.
Since there's a parking variance associated with this use, it seems to me that. Unless there were comparable or virtually identical use, right? If you, you had said, well, what if you, what if you change it and it becomes more gym-like in terms of a user? That's a fundamental change, right? But if Mark Akins decides he wants to run a Mike Duffy-type studio. It seems to me that's more apples to apples, and I don't think that Mark Akins should be precluded from doing that. As long as those numbers and the parking and the requirements that we're talking about here are met in that instance.
I have a question for Jordan. Jordan, your definition is studio, which encompasses quite a few things. Would that cover if somebody wanted to come in and just say, I wanna run a dance studio, they give them now? So then we would have to be extremely specific, should the board see fit to grant, grant the variance. Only for this specific purpose and not for a studio purpose.
Yeah, it says studio, then it gives a few examples, but I think the intent is that it could expand.
Which could be more intense than, 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 than nine maximum people.
Yeah, so Mr. Higgins, I, I think, I think what you, what you told me you wanted, I, I, but I had to parse it, is that you want the ability to swap out the tenant. As long as it's the same type of tenant.
And no more intense, particularly because we have, I think it's only reasonable because we have a parking variance.
I, I don't, I don't think that that's an easy thing to do. It may be easy to say, but. Mr. Duffy's business in Little Silver is one that a lot of people are familiar with. He describes it as something somewhat unique. And so when you started your gym, I'm not exactly sure how exactly we would direct the zoning officer to evaluate. Whether or not your gym is gonna be the same as Mr. Duffy's. I, I'm just trying to understand the way to give Mr. Duffy's testimony with regard to the parking. Because you'll remember there is some serious concern as to whether or not the, uh, parallel spaces are really spaces. And whether or not you're going to be able to accommodate the parking needs of the upstairs tenant. There's, there's pressure on this site for very specific things, and I wanna be sure I understand what you're asking for. If it's generic as to the use, I think it would be very hard for the board to, to limit Mr. Duffy's use. Versus another type of studio that would otherwise be permitted, and I think it factors into the way you look at the park.
Fair enough, but it's not, my comment's not directed or intended to be generic as to the use. It's tended to, it's intended to be comparable. As to the use, right? If we're talking about a studio, what if my. Program actually is a dance studio that's run by my sister-in-law, but the, but the numbers are the same. It's one-on-one. It's two employees. It's thirteen people per day. It's four hundred some odd per month.
But we don't, we don't have that category. So the category that you're fitting into. Requires a certain amount of parking, and it certainly could be more intensive than what Mr. Duffy described. I'm just trying to make sure that we're properly assessing what the needs are gonna be, and if it's specific to Mr. Duffy, it seems to me it's one thing. And if it's generic and it could be other people that are otherwise permitted within that zone, then it's something different. That's all, that's all I'm asking.
It might also affect the noise differences. I would, I would imagine if. A studio could be a dance or, you know, that would have much louder noise coming than what Mr. Duffy described, so.
And what's to stop a class being held for thirty people with one. Uh, under the, under the guise of studio?
Well, that would be the restrictions that are set forth in any resolution approval, Doctor. Those conditions.
Mr. Duffy, there is a building at the, uh, a little square building at the western portion of the property, which is, uh. Just to the west of, of the portico. Uh, what, what's the plan for that?
Like the drive-through on the right?
Yeah.
They don't have a plan for that. If anything, an office or something, something much, you can do, it's a very small space.
Yeah, I was just wondering what, what you would do with that. Would you rent that out? Would you?
I think, I don't know if that's, it's usually just a teller sitting in there, so it's kind of this. I have to be there. I'd use it for storage in an office or something, but.
There is some modification though. We talked about this last time, some modification to that area for an employee access order.
The door, right, there was something there.
I think there's a door there. Yeah, there's a door there.
It's being removed?
No, no change. So, there's a, there's a door being removed on the front of the.
So, Mr. Anderson's gonna walk us through plans.
Yeah.
I, I think that you've explicitly requested the right to have, um, a second tenant upstairs. And you have not requested the right to have a third tenant in this area.
No.
This would be ancillary to the main use, and because it's limited, which we're about to say.
I, I wanna be clear, there's no third tenant. And, and also, having had a, a brief conference with Mr. Anderson sidebar, I, I wanna make sure that, that. E- even though I tried to. Give the board sufficient comfort that an apples-to-apples comparison on a future studio use would be appropriate. I'll, I'll withdraw that and just say, this is for Mike Duffy's studio, as you've heard in his testimony, just so we're clear. Make it easier?
I, I particularly think it makes it easier for the board to try and understand how the second story.
And I do, thank you, Chair. Thank you, board members. Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Anything further?
Mr. Duffy, I have a couple of questions, John. Are you familiar with Insight's plan, how it shows two parking spaces? Um, one is striked in the rear of the building, the other one is.
Yeah.
By the drive-through. Could we use your plans just while, while they're out? Sorry, this is A fifteen, right? Yeah, there's, there's one space which is not gonna be striped. It's graphical, it's only. Correct. And then there's the second space, which is striped. So a few questions, I guess, what would be the relationship? A, for, assuming you have the whole building, B, you're dependent, with who parks there? My concern is if someone parks in the, the back space and starts pointing forward, it doesn't really, or significance is parked in the side space. And has to reverse all the way back. Need parking on the theater? And then the second question is, would you speculate, not until you've owned by two. Parked there, and you wouldn't stack the entire driveway? Yeah, you're not gonna stack it in from River Road all the way back. This is awkward, but. That'd be, that'd be the only part.
Which, I think there's a sign on here.
Yes, so one and two.
Yeah.
But the intention's not to stand there, just one and two. And. You have a tenant, go work it out with any of that. Chair, I recommend that as a condition of any approval, that the, uh, the spaces on the side and rear of the building be limited to what's shown on the plan. Just two total as opposed to, um, the ability to stack the entire row.
Is there any consideration given, and this is probably a little far out. To having the entrance and reconfiguring the entrance be that old drive-through on the western side. Coming that way, it would increase the utility of the. Parallel spaces against the fence, at least your drivers would be on the right side of the parking lot. And the flow of traffic would go through. Now, you'd lose those two spaces behind the building.
I'll suggest that.
We had talked about that.
Let me get to Mr. Anderson on that, Mr. Chesney, that's okay.
Yeah, that's fine, sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Higgins, I, I'd like you to clarify whatever little discussion you just had, because we can't see what you were pointing at. I'd like to. Be sure that I understand what, what exactly you talked about and what stipulation.
Sure, on the site layout plan of A fifteen, this is the latest in the site plan, uh, it shows. Two individual parking spaces. They're both numbered, but one, one is on the left side of the building, the west side. That's not gonna be a striped space. That's just for graphical purposes, only saying that one car will park there. The other one is a nine-by-eighteen space that will be striped in the rear of the building, and the intent of that space is that, uh. Cause their apartment there is back up. In the parking lot to the east. My suggestion as a condition of any approval would be that the. Operator doesn't have the ability or, or doesn't park the entire western and southern aisle with cars if they, they have a surplus. Um, especially as it relates to the neighbors, um.
Yeah, you're saying just fill it up like a horseshoe, basically. We don't, we don't want that happening.
Is there gonna be any signage to prevent your customers from pulling into that portion?
Yes, the plans say driveway for employee parking only. Yes.
How does the, how does the person in the westernmost parking space get out if they, if there is a. Second person parked behind the building?
I, so I have requested on, on people circulation plan, which hasn't been provided yet, but it would be provided as part of compliance.
Do you have to back out onto River Road?
Um, you know, you probably back out far enough beyond the, the ADA space and then have to make a turn from there. It's a pretty far maneuver. So I, I. It's assigned for employees. I would guess that employees would usually go out once per day as opposed to.
Yeah.
Um, walking through the lines during that multiple times.
So. So this may be, this may be from Mr. Fisker. So the. The design is that you're driving in off of River Road, you're coming in underneath the, the drive-through, and you're parking just past. The, the, the portico or whatever. The second space.
It's your other way around. That's, that's an exit driveway.
So then that.
This is exit.
So this car needs to get here first to the west. They drive through, park there, they're ready to exit River Road direct head-on. And the second space, build second, somebody's turning around towards the second drive-through and then backing behind the building?
That's why I asked what the relationship will be with this parking there, so the, the person who's parked behind the building doesn't. Drive forward and, and then get trapped and then has to even further reverse.
My, my issue, so, 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 my issue, it, it starts with reuse, right? So. It's recognized by me and I trust others that we're trying to do as, as, as much as we can on this site. And, and I think that we can talk about it and stripe it, but the practical reality of it is different. And how it's gonna be used has no relationship with what we're talking about tonight. It's gonna be used in the way that it functions and works for everybody. I, I'm. What, what I really wanna try and understand and certainly get to is how many of these spaces are really going to be used.
Sure.
Because what you've got is you've got people coming in and out, potentially every half hour, at least one, maybe two people. And I assume that those trainers are popping in and out, or are they working for a whole day? Somebody working eight hours?
Yeah, two trainers that work a full day.
That, so, so you don't have the different trainers coming in with their different clients?
Those would be the part-time, the four part-timers. They would come in, there's like a morning part-time and an evening part-time. The two, our two employees that come early in the morning, they're there at five or six, and then they stay there all day until the day's done.
Any question for Mr. Fisher? Mr. Fisher, this parking space here, which way does the vehicle face? Does it face west or does it face east? On A fifteen?
It faces west.
Okay. So, so it doesn't, it doesn't back into the space, it pulls into the space?
Pulls into the space and backs out.
Practically, how does that happen? Does the first employee drives all the way through to the first space, and the second employee to arrive parks in that space?
That's right. That's, that, that is controlled by nature of the tenants communicating with each other. They'll figure out a process of who gets to use what. There's no customs, there's no question. It's, it's the daily users that figure that out.
I, I totally buy that that's doable, by the way. I mean, I, I, I do think that that's how it's gonna be used, but when they. But, but when you stack other cars, the other cars along this fence, along the southerly line.
We stipulate not to do that.
No, I think he's talking about, um.
The, the parallel space.
Oh, I, I beg your pardon. I thought you meant in the, in the, uh.
I think the bank used it in a similar fashion. As a matter of fact, they would put more than two cars behind there if they're not mistaken. But did the bank have the parallel spaces along the southern?
No, they didn't. They might have existed, but nobody ever used them.
Yeah, also, to me, it's a good use of space, even if they didn't.
Yeah.
But the bank resolution said that there are twelve spaces required. The plan shows eight, so there might have been parallel spaces.
But, but the bank.
They also required the employees to park off.
Twenty-two spaces upside, right? It was a very, very different idea. We, we haven't gone there, but, but, but let's go there now. Twelve spaces were required?
Right.
And, and where are they on this plan?
I don't know. There's, there's eight existing.
Eight are the angle in facing River Road?
Yeah.
Okay.
They very well could have counted four parallel spaces along that fence.
I mean, they could have, yeah, they could have restripped or the structure could have faded, we've talked about it many times.
The, the, the problem with that is that with the fence the way it is, right at the curves. And people are driving in, you've got the driver's side to the fence, so it's not, it's not happening. You know, people are, i- if they're gonna do it, they're gonna do what everybody else did today at the shopping center. They're gonna park as far away from it as possible. So that they can get their car door open without getting their cars stuffed up, and then that's gonna create an issue with people when they're backing out. We don't need that many spaces, because Mr. Duffy has shared with us, he really needs very limited parking. I don't wanna stripe it and try and set it up in an unreasonable way. I, I, I realize we're trying to accommodate what the ordinance is requiring. I'm just trying as a practical matter to understand what's really gonna happen and do the best we possibly can to set it up in a way that it's gonna function. And, and, and then I think that, that, that leads into whether or not that second user upstairs. Makes sense and whether or not there really is enough parking here for that to be able to work.
How has the reconfiguration that, like, Mr. Fisher here?
Um, he's here.
You said that you made accommodations that we had asked about those spaces along the fence and that they were resized or something to that. How has that improved the, the ability for somebody to pull in and actually get out of their car?
So a common dimension for parallel spaces is seven by twenty-two. They vary depending where you are, but seven by twenty-two is common. Um, that's what we had on the original plan, but based on comments from last time, the request was to make them eight feet wide, so the revised plans have them eight feet wide.
What's the resulting aisle width? Between the angled parking and the parallels?
Yeah, it's angled and we've measured it. Get back to you.
It's eighteen at the neck, but it increases as you build, you know, like the direction here.
So what, so what's required, is it RSIS? We did this with regard to the act years ago. I know if you pull in straight, you need more, right?
Yes, so your ordinance for the angle of those nine spaces along River Road, I don't remember chapter in the verse, but I do remember this. Based on that angle, the aisle width requires eighteen feet. Which is what we have.
You meet that from one side to the other?
So remember, it's on an angle, so there's, there's a choke point at the eastern limit of the first parallel space.
Right.
That's eighteen feet. After that, as you head west, it gets wider.
And that's because you slimmed that one spot down from eight to seven, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
The first spot.
First spot.
Mr. Fisher, what is the option for parking either on River Road or Smith Creek?
Well, you know, that's one of the things that I'm gonna get to in planning. You know, when you talk about comparing to the nineteen sixty-eight resolution. There was an off-site parking. there was an off-site parking component. What I believe we've done here is we've created a use and a site that can accommodate all parking on this site, thus relieving dependence on public on-street parking, off-site parking, that kind of thing. So I saw that in the benefit.
Is there an option to park on Smith Street?
I believe there is parking on Smith Street, right? So sure.
One side, right? Yeah, just one. It poses to the.
The inside, Smith, can you park the entire block all the way back to the corner of the acne all the way back? The right-hand side?
Not sure off the top of my head.
And on River Road, it's on the far side, it's on the north side, and they're shown on your plan, right?
Yes. Yeah, that's on the area, A something.
So let's just be honest, that's exactly what's going to happen if you're parking like a disaster. And no, no one's going to want to go into the parking lot if it doesn't work. They're going to take any spot on River Road they can. They're going across the road, they're going to park on Smith. It's public parking.
I, I suppose that would be consistent with the sixty-eight resolution, but you know, we're, we're trying to make it better and put it all on that site, on this site.
I think designing it in a good way so that it functions is, is a design that's a bit accommodated. Squeezing it in so we meet the numbers, so we get a second tenant upstairs is going to have the opposite effect.
So I, I will tell you this, I know this is fair to you and I respect that. We design a lot of parking lots all over the place. This parking lot, I don't see it as tight and cramped and non-functioning. There are some in Hoboken and those kind of areas that might be a little bit too tight, but this I can see function.
How many parking spaces are shown on this plan?
Nine and four and two, I think it's sixteen.
Including the two beyond the building.
That's correct, sixteen. And, and you know, when you talk about adaptive reuse and existing improvements, all that kind of stuff, you have to get creative and try and you know, fit things where you can as long as they can function. I, I think we've accomplished that here. We had the space, we have the circulation, we have the driveway, it's like, I'm comfortable with it. I, you know, we also heard, I know about the, the mystery user that's your concern. Um but we heard testimony from Mr. Duffy. He doesn't think he's going to need all these spaces. I advocate to put them all in because I think it's the wise thing to do. You have the space if you ever need them accommodated on site. I'd rather have them and use them infrequently than not have them and need them once or twice a year.
I've seen a lot of navigation of small parking lots by SUVs. I don't know if anybody's ever parked in Philadelphia Airport. It feels like it's striped this way. It's absolutely unbelievable. Put an F one fifty in one of these spaces, it's going to be hanging at the back. But, but, but that's, it should be designed around that practical reality is my point.
Well, I agree with you on airports. Those are long-term, low turnover parking lots. They are cramped. And, and I agree with you and it drives me nuts. I feel like I'm going to get a door ding every time I get as an F one fifty drives, as an F one fifty drives, that needs a new transmission, if you know what I mean.
It's not even the door, it's not even the door. It's manipulating yourself through and around the parking lot because if people don't feel like they can do it, they're not going to park. You, you're going to get nine. You're going to get nine against, against River Road, no doubt. The question's whether any of the others are usable. And the employee spaces are, I, I understand. I, I think it's going to, I think that'll work.
You know, i- if you're you've really hung up on it and you would rather not see those four parallel spaces, and for the record, I advocate to keep them. I'd rather have them there and have them used infrequently. But as an alternative, what you could do is make it two. Then it's very easy to navigate the two. You don't have to squeeze in a parallel space. Each face has its own access.
I, I'm focused specifically on the fact that Mr. Duffy's testimony and an understanding that you're looking for approval to put Mr. Duffy in this space makes sense. I get it. I see it. It's not as intensive as what the ordinance requires. It's the second tenant upstairs, I'm trying to understand.
Yeah.
It really is.
But if that second tenant were an office used by definition, the requirement would be less.
I can't focus on.
We don't know what.
I can't focus on the practical reality with regard to Mr. Duffy and then take the theoretical with regard to office. It, I I'm concerned that we don't know who that is, not locking in.
Okay. And well, not yet, we can have a sidebar. Yeah, would, would you give us five minutes, Chairman, just so I can speak to my client?
Sure, of course.
You want to hold five? Should we recess?
We want to. And I saw that before as well.
Yeah, I didn't even know there was, that there's something existed, I think. I, I was used to it. A bed in the building.
What's that?
Said a bed in the building. It's starting to happen. Upstairs, you can have it a while. The joke. Don't touch my head.
The joke, you got it. Sorry, Al, I forgot they knew it suggested that the traffic change.
Yeah, no, sorry.
In and out here, like in and out here.
No, it's all here. This is in, this is only in that.
And only in a certain sequence.
You're right.
Remember those old tile games you had?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do that.
Thank you, Chairman.
Sure.
Thank you for that. Okay, so just a little bit of an update following discussion with Mr. Anderson. Clarify things. So his view of it is Mr. Duffy will have the entire building, no second use. Simplifies things.
No, no, I don't, I don't give a shit. I don't even think it's a practical thing. I do my.
I'm going to put him on. I'm so sorry.
Let, let me, let me post Mr. Anderson off.
Andrew Anderson and E E R S O H. Thank you, I'm sorry. That's okay, I did for ease. So what I, what I had said to Mike earlier, so I live at eighty-one River Lawn Drive, so I'm local. I own a few buildings in town. I currently have my office at eight oh three River Road. So I said, while Mike is ramping up, until he can occupy the space upstairs, I'll move my office in. I'm a single user. One employee makes it very easy.
One employee plus you or just one person?
One person.
One person.
One person. And, and as it relates to the parking, you know, for the past, I don't know, three years, the salon across the street has been parking in the lot. And they've utilized it exactly like this with the parallel spaces behind and parking in the nine. So, you know, we're not going to need them from an intensity standpoint. I happen to agree with with uh Mr. Fisher that I'd rather have them than not, but if it's important to the board and you feel that it's pinched, Mr. Chairman and everyone else, then we get rid of them.
So for how long do you expect to use that as your grounds?
I'll use it as long as I need until he's ready to decide.
So.
I'll rent out eight oh three. It's very simple for me to do that.
So for the purposes of understanding the adequacy of parking, if you're if you're offering to use it with two people, are you s- suggesting that we consider it as a second user with two people and two cars? So that we can get around speculating and focus on what that means?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure. And truth be told, I'm going to ride my bike ninety percent of the time.
He said one person.
Well, but it, it'll be, it'll be me. I occasionally have meetings, I'm a young employee. But, and we're going to have an end ball park for, for that.
So okay. Let's office back to studio. Okay.
Let me just, let me just, so that, so that the record's clear here. We're, we're calling an audible here. So definitely not part of the L. So Mr. Anderson, what would your hours of operation be if it's your office there? Uh when would you be there? Monday through Friday, nine to five?
Monday of the week, seven to seven by appointment. I mean, I come into the office as needed. The less I'm in the office, the more productive I am. So you know, but I need a, I need a base to work out of. I need a base to zoom out of. And as I said, currently it's in four three.
No assistant, no secretary? Just you?
No. Melissa is a partner in the real estate. She would be there occasionally when I need to turn it out. It shouldn't be. I don't have an assistant.
Mr. Eric, because by the board's digesting that, I think I would want to clarify and square footage of the second floor.
I, I had originally intended to put Mr. Anderson on, but we wanted to get into this, so we'll come back to that.
Mr. Anderson, we're, we're reducing the number of parking spaces required, but I think.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll, I'll bring it to the square foot to the board's attention. I'm, I'm jumping at the bit to bring him up.
Well, it, it, it doesn't. It doesn't really change it because just if you go back to studio use, it's going to be the same requirement. It, the issue is whether it's, it's one user or two. But explaining if you were to use it as an office, what it is practical matter, what it is for you, I think you put in context to the question of what would that be?
Yeah.
So it's either going to be Duffy using it, Mr. Duffy using it consistent with his program or an office user less intense. And that's essentially what it's going to be. But there, you're not proposing to lock that down, the user, the way that you propose to lock Mr. Duffy down because you've said that you would use it temporarily and then would take.
And, until Duffy grows into it. So I think whatever, you know, whatever restrictions are placed upon him below carries upstairs for, for his use at that point, right? But until then, it'll be me using it as a single user. And just, and, and for, for what it's worth, just as a resident, so you hear, I, I care deeply about the town. I care deeply about the aesthetic of the town, the businesses in the town. I've taken three structures in this town built between nineteen hundred and nineteen twenty-four and, and this and have done the renovation on them as opposed to tear them down when most people thought they were teardowns. Mr. Anderson helped me with that. And so I just want to make sure that it's not lost on you guys or any of the public here. And, you know, my commitment to this town is deep. And I also volunteer for the town.
What are those other um commercial properties that, that you own?
I own eight oh three River Road.
What, what, what's in it? How would we know it?
So I have, I have a um little local user who used to be my neighbor on Linden Street that does uh one-on-one flights in there. And she sold like a little athleisure wear store in there. There's a dog room in the back that everybody sort of knows, a little small building.
Next door to Boxwood.
It's right next door to Boxwood, exactly. And then she'll sell them in the, in the, on the first floor, total real estate. Um and that building was built in nineteen hundred and was in pretty significant disrepair. The tenants came to me um requiring nothing aesthetically to be done. And I spent quite a bit of money making it look like something because I really didn't have a care about it.
And you renovated your home on River Lawn.
And uh I, I had first designed a a new home on River Lawn. And as I, with the jet inflation, as I sat with it um looking at the bones of the house that we built in nineteen twenty-four and it's sort of been mutilated over the uh previous forty years, I thought that we could bring that back and rather than tearing it down and putting it all in a dump and um we spent quite a bit of time and I spent significantly more money than I would have if I built new.
And a couple hearings before this board, if memory serves me right.
It does. And um so preservation of structures that exist to the extent that they can be saved is important to me. I did it to my house at one Ford Linden that everybody said was a teardown. Um so uh you know, I don't want it to be lost on anyone here that anything out of town that doesn't care about this because I do. Uh and I certainly appreciate all of your time and any volunteer here and any of the neighbors who have anything to say and I'm happy to answer anything that's great. Happy to answer any, any comments or questions anyone asks. I'm here and I'm local.
No further questions to Mr. Anderson, Chairman. Good?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Applicant calls, James Anderson, licensed architect.
No relation.
Not yet. Good evening, Mr. Anderson. Do you have any licenses from the state of New Jersey?
I do.
And what would that be?
I'm a registered architect here in New Jersey. Um and a partner in the kitchen cabinet, I'm an architect in Rumsen. Uh I've been there since nineteen ninety-two. And I've had the opportunity to have been to this board a number of times in the past as well as a number of other municipalities and.
Chairman. We've accepted Mr. Anderson before. Thank you so much.
Look, before I start, uh in terms of getting uh marked into evidence, I believe I have two exhibits. Uh the majority of these are what you already have and have submitted. There's two that uh you don't have. One is a uh this existing uh picture of Google uh street view uh by uh five fifteen.
We're going to call that, why don't we call, why don't we call the uh color elevation A eighteen, I'll write if you would, if you'd indulge me.
Okay.
A eighteen.
This is part of the set though. That there was.
I know, but I'm just trying to mark, I want to mark these and distribute these to the. Back into my madness.
Okay.
A eighteen, yeah. And this is, I'm going to distribute just for our record, this is a package of the elevations and the floor plans.
Can I stop you there?
Sure.
Because there's one uh other uh floor in which is in there, which was not in the packet.
We, we, we could mark that too.
Well, that, this is.
Is this streetscape in this packet?
Uh.
The black and white there?
Don't. Yeah, uh can you check that out?
Sure. It is?
Oh, it is. Okay, so that is. We have another packet of documents.
A nineteen. I'm going to call this A eighteen, which includes the color elevation.
This is A eighteen, so is that.
This would be a nineteen.
A nineteen would be the black and white.
The board there is A.
Right. A eighteen.
We convinced in that?
Yes. Yes, it is.
Thank you.
A eighteen consists of what documents?
It's the some color, the colorized elevation, the floor plans and the balance of the elevation.
Since you said what was already submitted, it's easier to use it like that. Uh you know, without having to uh employ the color of the background.
It's also going to have A nineteen attached to it, which is the black and white Google screenscape.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I have one last one, which is.
Sure. Now that's not part of the distribution.
I don't.
Okay, so that, we're going to mark that eight twenty. Can you describe that for the record?
Yes, this is the portion of a few photographs of the portion of the second floor that it will be remain uh uh not for average use, but for the existing mechanical equipment is, is going to be retained in that.
So A twenty, second floor photos for remaining mechanics.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, Mr. Anderson, can you please walk the board through the existing conditions on the exterior, what we proposed to do on the exterior, the existing conditions on the interior, what we proposed to do on the interior?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Um as Mr. Anderson has mentioned earlier, this is a real classic uh situation of an adaptive reuse. It's, it's as a building structure which the prior use has changed and, and it's no longer um you know, uh in use there and rather than taking it down uh a compatible use is considered for it. So obviously it has kind of three connotations of, of, of bringing the existing structure rather than being rid of it. And as Mr. Anderson mentioned before, he's done that with the other structures that he's not only here in town. Uh in terms of the exterior uh changes that are, are modifications that are being made, um the buildings are nearly, it was built really well. Uh it's in really good shape. There's been a lot of deferred maintenance. Um so uh to the left is the, the current state uh on the.
A nineteen.
And on the right, I made eighteen is where it's uh the proposed um uh modifications to it. Uh the, the first one I should mention is that there's a slate roof on it and that's intended to be uh retained and cleaned and repaired as, as uh needed. The, the second um thing I should mention is that the uh brick veneer exterior will also be retained and repaired as needed. Uh but it would, a whitewash is uh supposed to be added over the brick that provides some of the brick tones to come through. That provides some of the brick tones to come through, but also, uh, a little lightening and, and, uh. Yeah, but make it a little bit more buoyant. So a little bit of the, uh, the brick tones, but, uh, it just. Kind of give it a little more depth than, than what it had before. Um, the, uh, doors and windows on the buildings would also be repaired, uh, as needed. Um, and they would all be painted a uniform color. Right now. The, the win, it's a, uh, a mix of the original windows, uh, which are white. Uh, and with the, the silking in it and then the, the newer, uh, uh, it's referred to as duronic bronze. That they added when they, uh, created the vestibule, uh, and the ATM entrance. So, uh, the, it would all be painted a uniform warm gray. So to tie, um, the, the older and the new together. Um, the, um, on the existing cupola on the building. Um, would be, uh, it's supposed to be, um, restored as well. The, um, wood boards with that enclose about would be taken off. And either, uh, we really don't know what the, the state that, that glass is, the sash is up there. If it's, uh, feasible to repair it, it would be repaired. If not, it would be replaced in kind with, with new locks that would match, uh, the existing. Um, the, um, existing ATM, uh, entrance, uh, over, uh, on the side. Uh, would be removed and I'll, no, go further into that when we look at the plans. Uh, but a bank of windows would be put in that would, uh, match the existing, uh, front windows. With the exception, the existing front windows are in a slight borrowed shape. The, these are intended to just be a straight plane going across and then, uh, a brick down, uh, below. And, um. Lastly, on the outside, uh, as you mentioned, I was talking about the cupola. Um, that there's a proposal to have a, um, uh, a weather vane on top with a, an osprey, uh, on it. And that was, um, uh, for aesthetics and also to, uh, pull that in as, uh, something that I talked to. Uh, you know, uh, a, a, a bird here that was a native bird here to the two breakers area. So. That's where the, the osprey.
Oh, you made it to the osprey?
Pardon me?
You made it to the osprey?
Hey, Sam, are you going to be raising the lights?
The osprey is on top.
Uh, the, uh, which one? The cupola? No, the cupola is remaining the same. The, um, osprey on top is in addition to the cupola and is dimensioned on the elevations in, in, um.
What, I'm existing conditions, do not raise the lights.
That's correct. In fact, uh, there's no e- expansion of the, uh, existing building.
So to the extent you get up there and it's not salvageable, you replace it in kind?
That's correct. Uh, the, the cupola. Yeah. Is that one? The sash. I, I believe the cupola structure itself is, 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 it just needs some, uh, uh. You know, repair it, but I think it's in good shape. The sash, not so sure.
Is the question, is there lighting up in that?
That's a really good question. I, and I don't think any is intended. Yeah, no, let's, this, uh, wait, if it was approved, no lighting.
Can you address signage?
Uh, I'm going to defer that to, uh, Mr. Fitzgerald, who was working with the signage. I think he, uh, last time, uh, talked about it, uh, and, and he has. The drawings and so forth to, to, to do that.
So talk to the revised plans from Mr. Fitzgerald, show up and insert for the signage. We'll bring him back to that.
And if I could, uh, describe the existing plan of the bank. Um, there, there's the, the drive-throughs. There's the vestibule in the front. Uh, a main space with, uh, uh, infrastructure related to the, uh, the banking facility. Uh, there was an, an office to one side, uh, at the bank hall. Um, there, uh, uh, an office over here. Uh, there, there was A, you know, that I mentioned that is, is, uh, that he pulls off now, uh, to the outside. Uh, there is, uh, currently a connection to the second floor from the first floor. Cause basically it was the banking facilities on the first floor and it was like a lounge. Bathrooms, uh, uh, place to eat, a place to, you know, take your, your break upstairs. So that you were up or directly related on the second floor. I'll show you that in a minute on the second floor. Um, and then, uh, where the, the fourth is. Uh, is to, uh, maintain the vestibule in front, uh, but add, uh, a reception, uh, area that's been added so that. Uh, when, when the people come in for the training session, uh, they can be greeted. The, uh, all the infrastructure related to the bank a- activities, uh, would be taken away. So it would just be an open space. Uh, there.
Mr. Anderson, mind, let me ask you about the entrance. So it's currently all glass, right? It's floor to ceiling glass when you walk in. You're going to be putting in a divider. So you've got your reception to the right.
Yes.
But you're going to have, what, what's going to face River Road?
It, it's, it's, uh, we're not changing the glass. The, there, there will be some, um, cabinetry behind it. So it's going to be modern cabinetry. That is not all of us to be open down below and, and not, um, so it, it. Where, it would look like furniture, uh, that's.
You're not going to treat the glass so that you can't see the backside of the desk from River Road?
That, that wasn't intended, but I think it would be more than open considering that, that it was, um, uh, something that the.
So what I want to point out that your, your, your front elevation, it's, you know, you're just kind of modernizing it a little bit. But, but what we see is we see the reflection in the glass. If, if the reality is you're going to see someone's back and a chair. And the backside of the desk, I, I'm sure you would do it anyway. I'm just looking at it. I was wondering if there was a treatment.
No, you know what? I, I think that, that's fair to, to, to treat that lower part of it. I think there's sort of, with, with some of the new offices and, and types of furniture that are available. There's ones that are, are, are meant to be seen in all the way around. Uh, and, and even some of the cores and all that stuff, uh, they are able to be managed. Uh, but there's still going to be print moves there and things like that. So, uh, that, that might be a, a good strategy to, um. Keep really the structure there and the glass there, but to take away. Looking at, you saying sitting down, people sitting down and so forth. So I think that would. I'm not sure that would.
Doesn't matter.
Yeah, so I, I think that, that, uh, I took, um. A good, but the, the, the intention here is really not to change the, the glass, uh, uh, otherwise on the.
Could you go back, Mr. Anderson, to A nineteen? Bring that up, please. On the bottom of, the bottom one, right? Bring that up. Yeah. What do we have presently in front of these? In front of these? In front of the glass, what we, what do we have here?
Are the bushes?
Right. Are those proposed to remain?
Uh, Jason, are the bushes, uh, are going to remain in front of the vestibule?
Um, that was actually a, a discussion point. It was, it was offered the name.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that, that's an alternative, uh, way of treating that as well.
So Chairman, they appear to be, from an uneducated eye, fairly mature at about three feet in height. So the proposal would be to have them remains.
Yeah, I, it's just a question. It wasn't a proposed condition. I just wanted to understand it.
No.
I'm sure, I'm sure you don't want it to look ugly. I, I know Mr. Anderson's trying to make a break. Just a question.
No, but we don't want it to look awkward either, you know, and, uh. It's, it's a good, uh, point. Well, they.
Mr. Anderson, what's the functionality of a portico on the left side of the building?
Here?
Yeah.
Um, well, it's a good point. Uh, there, there was a, an off, uh, an office before. Uh, and that is going to, uh, remain an office. The, uh, ATM area, uh, which is here, it's going to be closed off to the outside. And it's going to be repurposed as an office interval from the inside only. And then that's where that, um, uh. The new, um, bank of windows is being, is replacing what was the entry into the, um, uh. ATM.
And what's under the overhang?
That, that's going to remain. That's not, there's no.
The handicap.
The handicap space?
Um. Imagine.
Yeah.
Uh. In terms of the, the utility of the, they kind of have vehicles, but, but, uh.
That, that would be the handicap space.
Okay, that's a handicap space.
And, but there won't be a door.
Sorry?
There won't be a door there?
No, no.
No, there's no door there. Uh, and it's, um, it's wherever over here though, there is a window here that's being, uh, removed on the. Uh, drive-through where that, uh, small office is on the front and that's really just trying to. Uh, make it a functional office, uh, there because we put in, we replaced the bank, uh. Of, of penetration of the front of the ATM a- area. It was going to be tough to really put, um, a, a table here. So. That was being proposed to be removed.
Mr. Anderson, what, what's the original square footage and what's the, uh, as proposed square footage? So, so I assume that the ATM was exterior space originally?
No, it wa, it was inside.
Considered interior?
So it's the same. Uh, the first floor was eighty-five, eighty-six, and it's not.
And, and, and upstairs, you've moved the, the bathrooms. Well, you didn't get it.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's a good, because it, there, there's a little tweak on it there.
Please.
Um, so. Uh.
Do you want to get to the second floor?
Yeah, well, just really quickly tell you about the, uh, uh, the vault. Uh, and the, the attempt there is to, uh, we weren't going to have the bathrooms upstairs if they were before. They were going to be, uh, the vault was going to be re, um, reconfigured with, uh, two handicap bathrooms down there.
It's really cool.
Now, I. Maybe I imagined it. I thought that the discussion the last meeting was that part of the utility of having a. Parking space under the westerly. Um, drive-through there was that they were talking about. Putting a door where that window is so that a person could go in. To the building without going out of the roof. Is that my imagination?
That's what I had mentioned as well. I thought it was.
No, it's a good question. I'm, I'm not, I'm not aware of that, but, um.
I, I thought they discussed that last time around, but I.
My, my bad.
That's not.
I'm sure you found that, but that's not the intention.
Okay. And the, that. Little office space in the drive-through on that end is. Included in that twenty-five hundred square feet that you're.
It is. It is. And I believe. There, there's on the, on the, on the cover sheet of the, of the, um, telling you shows the hatch, what, what, uh.
And it says what, I'm sorry?
Oh, it shows the, there we go, the area that's counted.
Okay.
Uh, it's, it's on this right one, uh, right there.
Okay, thank you.
It's, that bathroom's there now, right?
Over here.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, you could, if somebody was there, it was the drive-through.
It solves the mystery, I assure you. Never knew, never knew.
I, I didn't.
Yeah, I worked there.
Need to solve it.
And, and, and you also had the last, uh, uh, change and I, I guess it's maybe it's something we should clarify here. We were really, um, not going to have these be, uh, contiguous, uh, business before. It was going to be too susceptible. And so that access to the second floor was being, being abandoned. Uh, from the first floor. Uh, because it's not, it's not that supportive use as it was when it was a bank. I, I don't know if there's any doing, but. I'm going to use it. Okay. So we're, we're, it'll be, it, it, it's going to be abandoned. The connection. The interior connection from the first floor to the second floor, it will be removed.
So is there, there's an exterior door now?
There is.
And there's also an interior door?
There is.
And so you'll close that, but otherwise leave the structure as is. And so you'll just be able to access it from effectively the rear of the building?
That's right.
Okay.
But this. Okay. It's, it's a little confusing there because you're talking about. Using the second floor as an office until Mr. Duffy expands into the second floor.
Right. That's why.
But if you abandon that. So then he's going to have two separate entrances, two separate spaces for his. Alliance, I guess.
Or it could be on backup.
Well.
Pardon?
Okay.
Well, just put a pin in it. I, to the extent that it's relevant, let's, let's, let's do it in the end. It's a.
The second floor now? From the submitted sets?
Yes.
Okay.
So. Uh, one or two, uh, in the building. He has one or two, I said. So.
But before we go to the layout of the second floor, could I ask you a question about it? Was that second floor space finished and appeared to be original to the structure?
Yes. Uh, well, it, we had the whole, the whole, uh, uh, well. The existing, this is the right one. It, it looks like it's all, uh, uh, if there's model pages, they can find it. Uh, I, I've been out there.
I am, and I'm, I'm just asking because we've been referring to the nineteen sixty-eight. Um, resolution that granted the variances and the, and the use variance. And one of the conditions of that was it was going to be a one-story building. So I'm, I was, that's why I'm asking if you think that that's original to this or if it was done at some point later than nineteen sixty-eight? Cause I don't.
So I've.
I don't know where the approval for that second story.
Well, that's a good.
Or half-story, whatever it is, anything more than one story is. An existing building.
So I've walked through the building. It is really old. You, you can tell that it is decades and decades old linoleum. It's got like a, like a wood panel thing. But the other thing is that it's the main bathrooms. So all the bank employees were upstairs. It was a break. But I don't, there is no other bathroom other than the one in the drive-through currently, is there?
Yeah, I think that's it.
So in order for them to get the original CO and use this thing, you had to be up there. You had to use it this way. I don't know why the resolution says that, but it, 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 it would, it's, it's pretty straightforward the way it's laid out.
It, it's a good, it looks like it's been there for a long time. Uh, for good use and, uh, style. So, uh, so case in point, yeah. So that was, uh, that's sort of the employee lounge up here. Uh, with, with his and her, uh, with the men's and women's bathrooms.
Bathroom's the same.
And there's a little.
Way all.
A little kitchenette, uh, I, I think, uh, up there. Um, but neither are, are handicap compliant. And, uh, and then there's a mechanical, um, space, uh, to the west. And, uh, what's being proposed is to, uh, take out those two bathrooms because now we have man's chairs in the, in the mall. And then, uh, to replace, uh, just a single, uh, handicap accessible bathroom, uh, there. Um, and then, uh. Maintain the, uh, the mechanical, uh, equipment up there, which is pretty involved. Uh, they did consider, uh, uh, thinking, uh, taking it out or moving it and that kind of stuff, but it's. It was, it was just too much going on. The electrical, uh, service is all through the panels.
Yeah.
Your pictures show that?
I think they do. So they, they, they show some of it.
Yep.
Bring it back to A, uh.
Now, those pictures are not part, no, okay.
Yeah, they're.
That's A twenty, you said?
Eight twenty.
They're, they're, they're not in.
Right there. Yeah. Did you take those pictures, Mr. Anderson?
I did.
Did you take them recently?
A couple of months ago.
They fairly depict the condition.
Oh, yeah.
So they.
I think, I think it's, I think it's a lot of HVAC. The, the electrical panels are there, of which. Really, uh, make up a lot of it. And then there's also some bank, uh, related stuff, which, um, yeah, I think they're just going to leave it there. If they're going to do much.
Okay.
That, that's going to be abandoned, but I think there was some questions.
How many square? Yeah, let's talk about the square footage of that.
So, I think the, the total on the second floor, uh, is. Is it one thousand one hundred and two square feet?
Sure looks like that.
That includes the mechanical. The, um, the mechanical area, there was four hundred and twenty-eight square feet and the, um. The habitable part is six, six hundred and seventy-four square feet.
So, Mr. Anderson, that, that's, there's, there's effectively knee walls, right? There, there, there's a slope in the roof there. Where are you measuring that to?
Um, it, it shows on the front. Are we taking it all, all the way to the knee walls? Uh, and those are, uh, I think it's six foot tall. Existing, the existing models are.
And if, if somebody wanted to poke through the wall, say that the mechanical equipment weren't there. Is there any impediment to poking through the wall, clearing out that other side and making that other piece of it usable?
Uh, it's, it's mostly the mechanical equipment and you locating the back, that would be the kind of it. This, this has the same height that it does on this side. So I, um, I think we could, you know, pass the bathroom. Conceivably that if you moved all the mechanical equipment, that could be made habitable space in terms of the. Uh, the height. It's a, it's a good, um, ceiling there. And, and we did, uh, you know, was being considered. There was just, there was two families and expensive with, with the, uh, the mechanical equipment just to.
So it's unusual to have an attic space accessible to what we would call a living level with what we normally do. Um, you know, in these meetings and so, but it, it seems to me based on the height of the second floor, it's really a story and a half. Where you put the bathroom is where you. Where you put the bathroom is where you have the height, but as you go to the sides, as I recall, it slopes and so to the extent anyone was worried that you would do that, it seems as though the placement of the bathroom kind of locks you into that design, or you really wouldn't be able to use areas around it to get past.
Not feasible, I don't, I I don't, or economically, I don't. Uh it we we did ask the question, and the whole big bathroom in here, but it was the the cost of mechanical equipment uh having to modify that, that that um that charity charge that they uh that they almost charged the office or the insurance, I believe, that depended. No, it's interesting, they may not have been made into habitable space originally, because it was right above where the safe is. And you know, you you like I said, this building's built very strong, a lot of steel, a lot of concrete, that wouldn't typically be in a commercial building, but I think there was a lot of of um uh wanting to make it uh safe for a bank, particularly with the the vault, so um you know, there may have been a reason why they they didn't put easy access, you know, uh over the top of that.
That's not gonna pose a problem to putting plumbing in the vault.
Oh, it's gonna be a a little, it it yeah, uh undertaking. They they they've talked to the plumbers and gotten glasses and stuff. I'm glad it stopped me doing it, so. That's that's a good question. We have, you you intend to say that there's not big architectural changes here, it's really uh uh it's it's in the bird may uh agents on it and uh uh freeing the little line and then and and then really taking out of a lot of the infrastructure that related directly to uh being a a net.
And again, your testimony was that there's no increase in the footprint.
That's that's correct.
Thank you. But it is getting larger, right? Cause you're, that that bathroom in the second story is increasing the usable area in the second story.
It does, it it this is is, that's a good point, uh but I mean zoning wise, it doesn't matter, because within that zone, you know, like functionally, they are, they are getting um a little more space uh.
So could we get the square footage again? So what is the second story as completed with the um with the bathroom, the square footage, usable square footage?
Uh we love it. I I believe it's six seventy four. See, it's six seventy four with that.
Inclusive, and and do you know what it is without the bathroom?
I I don't.
And so you still have the sloping roof height, so when you get to the perimeter on two sides, the north to the south, River Road and then back, that's only six feet?
That's right.
The 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 relevance is that.
No, it 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 can you see what I mean, thi- this line and this line are the six foot high uh wall.
And so, do you have any, do you have any pictures of that side of the of the structure now?
About that.
But you're not proposing to change the roof in any way?
No.
So what I wanted, just what I wanna share with you is that it is small. Really small. No, smaller than that, and because the roof slopes, it really feels smaller than it actually is, and and I, the reason I'm I'm pointing it out is because I I'm I'm still focused on that second independent user. And kind of what could you do up there?
Utility is minimal.
You just can't do that much, I mean, it really, you know, you really just couldn't.
Actually, the quality of the wall seems to change, the very front corner, four, six foot, then it goes down to five foot three.
Five foot three, yeah.
That's a bump out, it weighs, have been dormer?
Uh there there, that's gonna remain a- a- as it is. That that is currently, it's a piece, my bag of the bathroom, and I I mean if uh we were just planning on leaving it there, but if it's a, you know, I hadn't thought about pointing it out to the.
No partitions, no, no demising, it's gonna be a single open space, you've got a closet on top of the stairs and the bathroom.
It it's currently one and it's gonna remain, the intention is to keep. Oh, but actually, now that you mention it, you know, uh the the question is whether or not to put a door at the top of those stairs. Um and because there was one, when it was a um the lounge, because I guess they didn't want the, you know, that sound going back and forth. Uh and when that next into the first floor that got, I mean, was taken away, we thought, and then see, we done was to take out that door. You know, and just have the one door downstairs, you're not having to is it, the stairs are 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 not relatively tight as well. And actually, now that I'm looking at that, that is, uh I I don't believe a a compliant uh door there as well.
You're saying compliant coke, fire coke?
It's not thirty.
Pardon?
It's not thirty.
Yeah, but there's no landing there, there's no, there's no landing inside the door, it just goes right there. I mean, you can do it in residence, but I'm.
Stairway isn't blind either, isn't it? Isn't it really tight?
Yeah, I don't, they're 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 lies and wrong.
I I think it's really important to understand this in terms of the the concerns about what that second story could eventually be, because it is really is it's just incredibly limited. I it I I'm just wondering whether or not um a stipulation with regard to any further demising in the second story would be problematic. So prohibit uh further devising on the second floor? It just seems to me that the function, if it's simply one open space, is gonna be limited to to something very, very small.
Mr. Anderson, are there two showers on the uh first floor?
In the safe?
It is safe, yeah.
All right, and I guess this is a more operational follow up question, but do you anticipate anyone staying on site or overlap between customers um and scheduled appointments? Maybe.
O- over a lot, you mean, will they, will they?
If if everyone's scheduled, they come in for hour slots, typically you come in and another person would be leaving at the same time. But yeah, is there an opportunity for people to stay on site? I guess.
After their appointment.
Or or do you go with, Mr. Duffy, do you go on your appointment at eight o'clock?
The only reason is to stay or be a big shower after the workout, it would only happen usually five AM, six AM appointments. Uh for people that work out before you go work.
So you've considered that as as part of, you know, the party?
Yeah. They hardly get used, and when they do get used, it's just those early times.
Thank you. Anything further, Mr. Anderson, from your notes? Is there a locker room anywhere? No. So someone would have to, if they can't come in, they change and. That's not, that's not, you you come ready to work, as I understand, you come ready to you know, to do your one hour workout with your coach.
But you may bring the bag with you so you can shower after a workout.
But the whole places we have, we don't, again, one seat here is one location, but from the other, there's nothing locked, he's there. People bring their bags, there's copies for the, put the bag in them. Um and come dressed for a job, so we very few people is showered.
Is there like a small seating or waiting area if you're there?
Like, no, it was, well, usually forest ones at the front counter, so if we come early, we'll send out the forest one away.
Have a perfect chairman, board members of the strength.
I have one thing, uh Donna Miller, for the record, um I just wanted to um touch base on the exterior building lighting. Um I know you're gonna paint all the doors and uh make these modifications, uh there are a bunch of lights, illumination and uh you know, signs from the old drive throughs, those are all that come off the building?
Uh I'm gonna go, uh we're gonna really address the uh uh building manager lighting, so if I can ask the only way that there's, what they're going to use for their event turn on?
Okay, so the stimulation is that all the the Romeus drive through, bank related lightings coming up?
I'm interested, so so Mr. Victor had sort of talked about what he adjusted, I'm interested in understanding the lighting plan um in in total, um so I think we should kind of cover it out at some point. I think Mr. Fisher had indicated that with regards to building lighting, it would be.
Well, he testified that there's a note on his plan referring to the architectural plans, and that the lighting would be westerly drive throughs. There needs to be some coordination on some different sets of plans from respect to lighting.
So all the lighting we'll put on Mr. Fisher's plan, so that it's just one plan that reflects it all, does that make sense? Yeah, that that's all fine, it's like, it's the intersection between what you have right now, some of the concerns that we heard from the neighbors, what you're gonna need based on the use, and seeing whether or not there's a way to accommodate any concerns and make it consistent, you know, with what this design and function is gonna be. Yes. Mr. Anderson, I wanna point out to you that it is uh nine seventeen.
Yes.
And we have a room full of people, we're good, I'm certainly taking up more than my share of time. Great. I just wanna observe it, I I would imagine that we're not gonna go later than like ten thirty, um maybe that's even a little late.
I have Mr. Fisher with the planning and then uh ready for public comment.
Can we discuss the lighting at some, as a subject? Like, Mr. Fisher made comments at the beginning saying, this was changed, this was changed, this was changed, but I'd like to see some others changed. Especially to the, the one thing I pointed out last time, I believe, Mrs. Fisher pointed out, the flag lighting.
Yeah.
Was problematic, and I know you said that you changed it, but I wanna know to make sure that that's accommodating to the to the neighbor.
Well, now really feels like the right time for that, um. I I think if you could just walk us around, help us understand what you understand the lighting to be right now, and then what you propose it to be, one of the things I heard you say earlier was that you're slopping one out because you're gonna use a streetlight, which is one of the things that we had talked about.
Yeah. So I, excuse me, I advocated um when we put this project together to light the site. Dafkin didn't want to, felt there was enough ambient light out there. And then we came to the first hearing, there was an issue with lighting, and I had my tail between my legs, if he's saying, see, so anyway.
Here we are, I wanna point something out, because that's really where I started, right? This bank's been there for however long it's been there.
Yeah.
The idea that the new requirements or updated requirements say to you, light this up, I understand that. But I think that we need to be sensitive to what everybody's gotten used to, what we would be changing and make sure it's purposeful. If it's purposeful to keep people safe, then certainly we need to talk about it.
And that's why I advocated for it. This time of year, you know, they they don't operate late, so in the summer, they may never need to light them, but this time of year, they would need it.
Have you been to the site at night?
I have. Yeah, early in the morning as well. So, just to describe what we have for lighting, one of one of the first things you have to do with uh site lighting design for safety and light driveways, that's the point of content that we want to keep safe. The uh, it's called the uh uh Engineering International Illuminating Society, I might have that backwards. I'm talking about that later.
That's my next witness.
There is a standard, there is a design standard, it's not. Guidelines that every year is following when we design sites. And they recommend, I did, it's somewhere between a foot and a half to two foot candles at driveways for safety. So the first thing I focused on was lighting the Smith Street driveway and driveways on uh River Road. I did not touch the western driveway, there's ambient light over there, it's hardly gonna get used, so we would not add a light there. We did add a light here by mounting it on the side. We uh we just can die pretty roof, I guess you might call it. And we added a a light pole over by the Smith Street driveway, that was on the last plan. We had on that, in the middle of the parking lot, that was a point of discussion last time, the decision was, you're actually from the board and probably take that out. So that light has been removed. There is existing street lighting, I believe there was two lights there, there's a Cobra head and then there's a decorative light on the sidewalk. We modeled those in our program, and that lights up the middle portion of the parking lot. The the light that I think everybody is maybe focusing on, and we were just talking about with the architect, is there's some ceiling mounted lights in that western drive through, and the neighbor, I believe it was lot fourteen maybe, um to our south, we'll say it's south. Complaining of the lights in that drive through, so it's exterior, but it's covered, you know, it's in that drive through area. So the note we added to our plan is take those lights out, and we're gonna put the new lights in, they go down, they'll be mounted in the ceiling, they'll go down. Which by I said, they'll be on the architect, so not really sight likes, they're just architectural likes, we can make our plans consistent for that effect. Okay, answer your question.
Where are there existing streetlights?
There's a Cobra head light, they're they're on the plan, but there's a Cobra head light uh kind of in the center of the parking lot, and I believe close by that, there's a decorative pole mounted light. Um I think there's a second one right in front of the building, yes, there's a second Cobra head light, uh kind of right in front of the building there, those are the streetlights.
So work.
Yes.
So for exterior lighting, down lighting recessed essentially underneath the the first drive through. On the second drive through, you've got a building mounted light facing River Road to the exit.
Not not really facing River Road, it's kind of facing diagonal out this way, but it it does light that driveway.
And then you've got another light that you put in on Smith Street.
Yes.
But that's it?
That's it.
No other exterior lights?
In in terms of what we're adding, the Smith Street pole, this building mounted light by the driveway, and then I'll call architectural lights in the western drive through.
Okay, and there were lights in the in the flagpole that were in the ground?
You're right, so there is the sign out front and the flagpole, they have lights. It seems that they're old and not very good, so we noticed that, uh made a note on our plans, we'll replace those with more appropriate uplights.
So, on the corner of River and Smith, there's a telephone pole that has a street light that comes out on the property side of the pole, does that not illuminate the Smith Street entrance?
I mean, you know, I'm happy to take all the lights out, I.
No, no, it's not yours, that's that's what I'm saying, uh on the telephone pole, like public street lights, there are two or more public street lights that come off of the poles on property side, as well as the ones that go out over the street, plus the one that's the old style lampposts, it's out front.
I'll say it, there's like it is on the plan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're they're. It it's not exactly as a corner, it's it's in just a little. They're labeled on this exhibit. That's them right there.
I was wondering if we need that light on the Smith Street driveway side, that's that's.
Yeah, that would love to remove.
It's existed there without it.
Yeah. I I don't think it's.
I think it's exchanged, so they do, and I think it's problematic for the neighbor on the corner.
And immediately across the street, across Smith Street, is one of the old style lampposts right on that corner.
Yeah.
Right.
So, I don't know. I I I drove there, I drove there a night after the last time we we met, and I I, it it seemed to me that it was reasonably well led. As it is, the the issue is, this is still residential zone, and while in Fairhaven, we have commercial abutting residential uh throughout the commercial district, it's not not all abutting exactly this tight. Um and so I I do think we should be sensitive to it, I wanna get back to the flagpole, um a- and the sign. I- i- is there any accommodation for the fact that you have a really residential all around you to try and soften this? Do we need flagpole lights?
Well, you either, it's it's gonna be an American flag, which goes to a a comment in Mr. Russell's letter, be an American flag. You either have to take it down and put it up every day, or light it through the night, and the desire is to light it through the night, keep it up. And those lights, they they go up.
So I'm not patriotic if I think that I don't. Tell me, t- t- tell us about the sign itself, you've got it. You you've got a P and C sign that's there, is it backlight right now, that what it was?
I think it's externally lit.
External.
Lights in the ground there.
And what are you proposing?
Yeah, it's um, we're proposing the same thing, it would be externally lit. We're we're proposing, again, new lights, modern, you know, grown up, nothing egregious.
Would you consider taking the stalk away? Would you consider taking the stalk away and just bringing a light down onto the ground surface?
A stalk?
It's on a, it's on a pole.
The light? You want a ground mounted?
Reducing the profile of the.
Reducing the profile of the sign. In other words, you you have a sign that has uh an elevation and it has the sign above it.
You have to look at site drawings.
Yeah, that that sign is in the site drawings.
We're we're all gonna have a chance to talk and I I just appreciate if we could just. You'll have a chance to talk?
If I could offer, at least as far as the flag is concerned, um. Lighting of the flag doesn't have to be from either side, it could be from the sidewalk planted at the building. That would at least block illumination from especially, you know, whoever's on River Road. And it wouldn't be high enough that it would get over the top of the buildings.
So my goal was to outline what's being proposed. And I know that the residents that live in the area had expressed some interest in talking about it and I figured that we need to hear from the residents to talk about. What it what the impact is on them and then we can take the discussion a little further.
The flagpole lights are on either side of the light now, is that right?
The lights are.
They're on both sides because of that light.
The applicant is eager to make this work and bring this building to life and he said it, we're hung up on flagpole data.
Okay, so 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 it's nice to know that the the applicant's accommodating with that concept. Um I I think with regard to the to the to the other, to the sign lighting in particular. I I I'm wondering whether or not there's a way to make sure that we've got it contained. But I just want to make sure I understand what you're proposing, because I'm not sure I I do understand it right now.
They're they're ground mounted lights, they they don't come out of the ground, they're just mounted at ground level and they're. Watch to the ground? Yes, they just point right up to the sign.
Okay, a- and but the sign's five feet in the air or something, right?
Correct. You don't allow, if I'm not mistaken, you don't allow.
Way higher. I think before we discuss the sign lighting, maybe you don't do this discussion. Were there a problem dropping the sign down onto the ground level?
We're gonna take a look at the detail every time.
I think the top is twelve.
Yeah, but it could be moved back up against the building, right? Be for the driveway.
Sure, the side triangle shouldn't. Mr. Riggins, yeah, I want to make sure that. Mr. Riggins, I want to make sure that I understand what's being proposed and then everybody can have their comment. Are you reusing the existing signpost and sign and just replacing it?
Yeah. They're they're slightly modifying the dimensions of it, yes, they're using the the existing pole, we're using a portion of the existing structure. They're not raising the top, but they're lowering the bottom by like five and a half meters or something like that.
This is part of the variance. The sign is the variance. So the the lighting from grade, is that the, is that the way you're supposed to light this sign?
Yes.
And are there alternative ways to light the sign? Can you do it from goose necks up at the top and just come back down to it, so it doesn't have to shoot from the ground all the way up? Okay. Why do you need that by signage?
Yeah, well, I mean, it's a business, you want to build brand awareness, you want to build interest, you want to direct people to the site, you know, that's important for businesses to have that visibility.
I was looking at other signs in town and um technically, I go down River Road, I think a canyon pass. I think of um a couple others, they're a little bit more in keeping. I think architecturally, this this thing that I'm looking at.
So.
Is like so out of context, um.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, so to that end, there's a couple of things. First of all, the intention is to use what's there. Right, even when we were modifying it, to use what's there. And then the other thing is, and I'm gonna talk a lot about this in planning assessments, we're out of context right now, but spoiler alert. The, we're not in the B one zone, but we're adjacent to it and visually we appear a part of it. And the the sign that we're proposing conforms to the B one standards. I know we're not in the B one, but anyway, we follow that guideline.
I think this is an opportunity to soften that. A lot.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, listen, I think so from my perspective inside, right, we talked about this a lot at the last day and there's been some conjecture. You know, you go with the post sign or a a smaller monument sign in front that's. Parallel to the front of the building, something that's still advertised Mr. Duffy's business. I don't I don't think anyone's in the nature of making it seem like his business isn't there, but. So I mean, the sign is. It's pretty uh, it's pretty egregious, right? And then even I think if you're moving it down. You know, it's like, hey, welcome to the commercial district, right? That's how it feels when you're driving down there. Is my perspective. I think the sign out of all of this stuff we discussed is the worst attribute of the entire plan, in my opinion. I don't think removing the American flag's a great idea. Maybe there's a way to put a post sign in front, have the lights behind it, eliminate up shields of it. You know, not uh, not for me to decide, but I do think the sign is by far the worst piece of this.
The sign looks like it's part of the bench, it was it was put there as part of PNC branding probably.
Yeah, it's the bank sign.
Well, right, but. There's an opportunity to make it, let's improve on 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 that nineteen sixty eight. Activity.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I can tell that the audience is very anxious to to make comments and so rather than asking them. To 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 wait, let let's see if we can move through what we want to do so we can get them involved. Um in in this aspect of the discussion, so.
For the recent uh resolution, not the ancient one, but the more recent one.
Mr. Riggins, while you're looking at it.
Yeah.
What, there was a, there's a second resolution from the planning board?
Thought there was a recent resolution.
Relating to what?
Relating to the sign. But maybe I'm not recalling correctly.
No, you're right.
Yeah, I I, you know, I I have a, I have kind of a workshop file at my office and then an application file. I have the application public there for this evening. But we can come back to that.
Okay. Did you remember something about it that was related to what we're talking about?
Well, I think it was, I think it would have been recently approved. I guess that's, that would be my my interpretation. It wasn't this board, it must have been on the planning board.
Okay, we'll come back.
Yeah, I think the point though is that the sign, it looks like a newer sign. That was.
Yeah.
Could have been specific, I like to say specific to the bank, so.
Okay, so. We've touched on lighting, we're not done with lighting. Touched on signs, we're not done with signs. We touched on flagpole, we're not done with flagpole. What's next in terms of new C? Okay, let's jump in while I fill the record.
Alright, so the the crux of the application obviously is that we're a D one use variance. Um we are proposing to adaptively reuse this fifty plus year old building, fifty six I think was the map. Uh to continue commercial uses on this residentially zoned property. And since we're proposing a different use than the bank, that brings us here seeking D one use variance relief. Uh the tenant is a a locally owned business, I know that's an important thing in town. Uh providing physical a- and wellness training, it's a, it's kind of a health and wellness idea. If the benign use relies heavily on appointments, it limits the amount of people that are on the property at any given time. We've done away with all this. No, no. Okay, and retain that. Okay, so one person office. That's right, alright, so there's still an opportunity for a small office, uh we heard that discussion uh. That's upstairs, the the fitness and office uh uses are both permitted in the B one zone. Site suitability is a big thing for D one variances and I think that's a no brainer on the site because this building has operated as a bank for the past fifty plus years. It's also on a on a county road, it's directly adjacent to the B one zone. And it has the visual appearance of being a continuation of the business district of the community. The property of the building are turnkey from the for the applicant, it's up for its own minor uh interior modifications. All the changes that we're making to the site are really just in response to the ordinance to accommodate the borough. The alternatives to this use variance would be finding a new bank tenant. Or demolishing everything on site and constructing residential homes. And the applicant has made it clear to us and I believe he stated here, he has. Really no interest in either one of those options. Uh he is passionate, as he said, about the town and and wants to bring that that uh wellness facility concept to the community. So the better planning alternative here is to adaptively reuse the building to provide services to the community. As opposed to adding, for example, residents that will be seeking services from the community. There are three C variances that are subsumed into the use variance. And that concept comes from case law, which we've heard it before. The idea is that the bulk requirements of the R five zone were not created with a commercial use in mind. So in order for a commercial use to be uh feasible, different bulk standards would need to be considered. In this case, the C variances we need are related to signage and lot coverage. So as far as the signage goes, it would be the maximum sign area. And uh the maximum sign area for a freestanding sign, so the residential zone permits two square feet. We're proposing twenty five square feet, I know that's on the table for discussion, but um as for now. The existing sign that's there today is twenty one point four square feet for reference. Uh the intention was to slightly increase the size of the proposed sign, but we made a comment that we would simply reface the existing sign. So it would remain at twenty one point four square feet. The, again, the B one zone permits that twenty five square feet, so it'll be undersized for the adjacent B one zone. The sign is gonna maintain the same front yard setback and the same height to the top. Um so as far as the height goes, the R four zone only permits four feet. And the B one zone permits twelve and the existing sign is at twelve feet. Uh which again is no surprise since the site has really been treated as a commercial property.
I'm sorry.
Proposing to maintain that twelve feet.
I'm I'm sorry, it's just so relevant. Wh- where does the size of the sign come from? And what what what's the the calculation for the twenty five feet? Is that based on just being in the zone, no matter how many users you have?
That's what the B B one zone says, yes.
Just per lot, that's maximum.
Twenty five square feet.
Eight users, doesn't matter.
I believe that's correct, yes, for a freestanding sign.
Okay.
And lastly, the R five zone does not permit window signs and we're proposing a window sign on the main entry door. To help direct people to the right place. It's just the top pane, it's shown on our, I think it's a sheet uh C seven hundred in our plans. Um it's just the top pane of the window, do you do sounds? Do window sounds? One on the. Oh, and. Yeah, like a wave finding sign in the back, yeah.
It faces to the east, if I remember.
The uh, the one that's in the front on the main door for the uh appliance or whatever they're called, um that faces, yes, east, it does not.
Right, you don't walk into the front, okay.
Yeah, are both signs the same or are they different? I, yeah, I think. Believe so.
Right.
The sign that's on the door that's that's on the River Road side, um that sign, that top pane of that door measures ten square feet and. Coincidentally, the B one zone permits ten square feet for the uh for the window sign. In terms of the maximum lot coverage, uh we in the residential zone, we're committed to have fifty percent. What exists today is seventy one point six four and what we're proposing is sixty eight point nine. Again, last time we were here, we were at seventy point seven nine, so we dropped it, it's very. The changes are near the refuse area in the rear, removal of concrete in the front. Uh on the eastern front facade of the building and now also a portion of the driveway uh adjacent to the ADA parking space. We're merely looking to continue the existing condition, but we were able to remove some of the impervious surfaces, which is gonna reduce one of and. Including visual appeal on the trees gate. There's also some existing non-conformities, um they're not gonna change, they exist today, we're not proposing any changes. I won't go through them in detail, but just to let you know what they are. They are classic C one archer variances. Lot frontage, lot width, front yard, rear yard, both for the principal building. Building height and the couple of dimensions, so tho- those existing non-conformity will not change. So in support of variances that we're asking for, I need to demonstrate to you that at least one of the purposes of planning would be advanced. If you were to approve this application, and I think there's a few. The first is, this is an appro- uh appropriate use and development which will promote general welfare. So again, this is an adaptive reuse project that's gonna bring a vacant building back to life and help improve the vibrancy of the neighborhood. It supports local small businesses, gives them a home in their community and it enables them to serve the people of the community. Eliminating the bank also reduces the parking demand on the site, which is gonna reduce relying on reliance on parking throughout the neighborhood. Which we talked about earlier, I think that's a wonderful dynamic. We're providing adequate light air and open space, we're not proposing any changes that would impact light air and open space that's existed for the past fifty plus years. We're providing sufficient space in appropriate location for commercial use. The application again is for adaptive reuse of a fifty year old site that has the appearance of being part of the local business zone. The building and site more than accommodate the applicant's needs or the tenant's needs. So I think this is entirely appropriate locations for the proposed use, use case. We're encouraging the location and desire of trip and design of transportation routes, which will promote the preflow of traffic. While discouraging the location of such facilities and routes which will result in congestion or blight. It's ideal to have commercial uses on higher order roadways such as River Road, which is a county road, so we advise this application. We're promoting a desirable visual environment. As part of this adaptive reuse, the applicant is gonna clean and refresh the building and the site and install additional landscape plantings. And when done, this property is gonna maintain its legacy charm. We're promoting the maximum practicable recovery of recycling and recyclable materials from municipal solid wastes through the use of planning practices. This purpose is advanced because of the adaptive reuse of a building and a site. The alternative would be to demolish all the existing improvements and construct a new development which would be contrary to this purpose. So we advance to this purpose. And lastly, we're conserving property values in the neighborhood. Once the applicant completes the proposed improvements and the local business begins to operate and serve the community, the property is gonna become an asset to the borough. Adaptively reusing a vacant property with deferred maintenance and bringing it back to life so it can contribute to the community will conserve, if not improve. Property values in the neighborhood. In terms of the negative criteria, I like to zoom out first and kind of paint a picture of what this really is. High level synopsis of this variance looks like this, you have a use variance to continue commercial use of the building. That's operated as a commercial use for the past fifty plus years. You've got bulk variances that are subsumed into that use variance related to business signage and the reduction in lot coverage. And then you have several bulk variances that are existing and won't change by this application. So while this application might have your attention because it's a D one use variance, it's actually a very simple application. And I don't expect the neighborhood and the community at large will notice much of a difference once the tenants occupy the building. Except that obviously the vacant property is gonna come to life again and contribute to the vitality of the borough. The property has the look and feel of being part of the B one zone, both by its its location and its history. It also coincidentally happens to be across the street from the B two zone as well. Your master plan discusses compatibility of the B one zone with adjacent residential neighborhoods. And while this property is not in the B one zone, it is directly adjacent to it and has been. It is directly adjacent to it and has been functioning as a B one property for the past fifty plus years. And with that in mind, your master plan says something that I think is very relevant, which is quote. While it may not be practical to increase buffer widths beyond thirty feet due to the relatively small size of the lots in the business district. The interface between the businesses and adjacent residences deserve sensitive consideration in the context of development applications. And that's exactly the scenario with this application, that was part of my testimony last time, the buffer would be adjacent properties to our south. We're reducing the intensity of use on the property, we're maintaining the existing conditions, we're replacing the existing fence with a new, more attractive. Uh, fence, and obviously all those neighbors' trees and vegetation along that property line are there to help as well. Your master plan discussing coverage, well. It says, quote. The reduction in impervious coverage in order to enhance the character of the business district remains relevant. Furthermore, as development, redevelopment occurs within the business district, the borough should encourage and facilitate reductions in impervious cover. And we've accomplished this by reducing the impervious coverage with this application. One of the objectives of your master plan is to protect and enhance the existing character of the borough. Again, the application's adaptive reuse of a building has been on this property for about fifty years, so we achieved this objective. Another objective of your master plan is to improve, improve and redevelop the business district as the main street of the community. Again, while we're not in the business district, we are adjacent to it, functionally part of it, based on its history. Uh, we achieve this objective by improving the property and bringing in this tenant, these tenants, who will serve the community. So with those thoughts in mind, I think that if the application was approved, it would not cause a substantial detriment to the public good, nor do I believe it would substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan. And as you uh consider the negative criteria, I do always like to highlight that word, substantial. You're not looking to see if approving the application would cause a detriment to the public or impairment to the zone plan, you're looking to see if it would cause a substantial detriment or substantial impairment. And I don't believe this application rises to the level of substantial in either case. And for the planning lovers in the room with regard to the Medici criteria for the D one use variance. I believe we provided proofs to support findings that the proposed use is substantially consistent with your master plan and zoning ordinance. And that we're able to reconcile granting of the use variance in light of the use's omission from being considered permitted in the ordinance. And on balance, I believe that the benefits of the application substantially outweighs detriments, giving you the ability to approve this application with confidence. That's all I have.
Mr. Akins, can you clarify what variances? Mr. Akins, you kind of mentioned some C variances, some previous non-conformities. At least I thought things that were effectively recovered by your existing resolutions. Or pre-existing non-conformities because they predate current zoning and grandfathering. I know you need a D one, I know you need something for the sign, but do we have any other C?
There's, there is two additional ones that I, I added to my most recent letter because they're replacing the fence.
Hold, hold on a second, so we're in agreement as to D one, we're in agreement that there's a variance required for the sign? There's two additional?
Two for the signs.
Two of the signs.
Quantity of window signs. Two are being proposed.
Okay.
Um, and the, the freestanding sign. Uh, it's one variance, but they exceed the square footage and the height four feet is required.
Can I get some clarification on the window signs? So the one window sign is gonna face to the east where the new door is, but you said it was gonna be ten square feet?
Yeah, it's.
This seems really big.
It's, I think the door, maybe Jay can help us, the door is three or three-something feet, and it's square, so you multiply me. I mean, three times three is nine, three change, we got that.
It isn't ten yet, but i- is the whole, is the whole window a sign or is it just an emblem?
Look, I, I could bring it to you, but on C seven hundred, they.
But that's, I don't know.
The sign is substantially smaller than ten.
Ten, ten square feet.
I agree with you.
Well, you got the door as the sign.
We, we just calculated that.
Probably like a vinyl wrap.
The pane, the entire pane?
I think his testimony was that entire pane is counted, that's a conservative approach.
Okay, but, but, but the balance, the voids in there are translucent, right? It's glass, and what you've got is an emblem, and the square footage, the emblem is far less compared to what we agreed, okay? On the back, you've got a similar sort of emblem on a similar sort of door that faces the fence, will not be visible from River Road or anywhere else, right?
That would probably just be lettering for Mr. Anderson's office.
And similar in terms of size, so it's gonna be a?
Probably just gonna be lettering.
One, two, okay.
I don't think we have an exhibit as to that.
So, Jordan, make sure we understand, try and understand over there. D one for the use, we've got sign variances with, because there's not one, there's two, one's the back door, one's to the side door. What's the other sign variance exactly in one on River Road? Is the whole thing need to be redone, is it proposed to increase it to the twenty-five versus twenty-one?
I think Mr. Akins speculated that we drop it from twenty-five to twenty-four, which is the existing size.
And then do you have, got a variance? Is, is it?
Well, it's two square feet.
Well, to your point, it's existing. If it's existing and it was, that's why I wanna see the resolution, Chairman, if it's existing and it was approved in two thousand eighteen, it's just being refaced, I don't think it requires a variance at all.
I don't think anybody likes it the way it is, I'm not suggesting they do, but, but, I wanna, before everybody else gets up and tells you what they don't like. I wanna understand what you're entitled to and what you need, there's a pretty big difference. So, okay, let's put that to the side, what else, anything else?
I have two, two fence variances, um, they're replacing the fence. Uh, it's gonna be a six-foot-tall fence, the entire right side of the property is considered a front yard because of process.
But the fence is there and it's a condition of the sixty-eight resident?
Yeah, I, I would, again, same thing, I would view it was previously approved, and it's required to be an ongoing condition of that.
The resolution was for a five-foot-tall fence.
Oh, right.
And in my opinion, this, this is a new application to new use.
Fair enough, okay.
Okay, okay.
I hadn't heard that before.
What's next, anything else?
That's all I have, and then there's uh five existing conditions, oh, I'm sorry, there's an impervious coverage variance, I didn't say that.
Why, we reduce?
Yeah, but it still exceeds.
But it's still a variance, it, it exists based on approval.
They're disturbing.
They're making a change.
Yeah.
And it doesn't comply.
Even if it changes to reuse? Even if it reduces the, the previously approved?
Yeah.
They're touching it, yeah, it's very.
Okay.
Yeah.
So they can leave it, not, not use it at all, they don't need a variance, in order to make it better, they trigger a variance.
Right, but it doesn't meet his objective of master plan if he doesn't produce it.
Oh, okay, well, okay, so he, so he takes a hint to his planning testimony, but he can leave it alone and not require a variance.
Not for that.
Okay, that's it.
That's it for the variances.
Okay, are you done? Yes?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Akins, we are paid to go to public?
We're okay to go to public.
Okay, so before we go to public, I'm gonna note that it is seven minutes, ten. Um, I said I didn't wanna go any later than ten-thirty, and that's why, that's what I still think we're probably gonna do. Um, I, I, I'm sensing that there's people that are very anxious to speak. One person at a time, name, address, politeness please, and let's hear what everybody has to say. Mr. Akins?
We have a two-minute break.
A comfort break for everybody, or is for yous? Alright, we'll call it, we'll call it a two-minute comfort break.
Thank you.
Procall please, Sean.
Mr. Natchez?
Here.
We have a twelfth here.
Here.
It's a fourth name?
Here.
Dr. Longner?
Here.
Mr. Benning?
Here. Here, okay, we're ready for public, so um step forward, state your name or address for the record, please. Mr. Kovats is gonna swear in, um, it's questions and comments with regard to the application and what you've heard tonight and what you've heard in the summer.
Where do I stand in this one?
Right here, just sit right, you saw him swear the testimony you gave before the board, the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last name to the record, please.
Arthur Arford, A R F O R D. Um, lot, uh, lot thirty-three, lot twelve, fourteen Colonial Court.
Thank you, Mr. Robert, just 'cause you're standing there next to the site plan, can you point to your house so we can understand your, where you are relative to it, please?
Uh, six, we, we're in a gate, lot twelve, right here.
Got it. Second house in on Colonial, immediately abutting in the back of the car.
Yeah, okay. Uh, a couple of things that I did want to mention about, especially I'm concerned about the party. Uh, first of all, over here, these buildings were not built until the nineteen eighties. And uh, we used to just have, uh, I know because I used to have my friends stand there and sit whole park over there. Uh, it's, it's gonna be a problem, second of all.
I'm sorry, your point is that when this building was built, that was actually parking adjacent to the Acme, it's no longer available for parking, making the, the parking off-site more complicated.
Correct.
Thank you.
Uh, second thing is that unfortunately lately, this area seems to be huge for long-term parking by a number of trucks. And I know this because the last time it snowed, those trucks sat there with snow on them for about three or four days.
This is on Smith Street?
Smith Street.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now that's the ground on there, the other thing I wanna mention is the water. Uh, the Smith Street uh goes downhill slightly from River Road and pools right there. At uh, where Colonial Court comes into it, there's been a number of times over the last fifty years where the water has come up. To the houses and then starts going down, now that is a problem, and it does, as I said, the runoff does happen that way, thank you.
Uh, I, I have, I have a question for you about the drainage.
Yes.
So uh, boy, everybody at Fairhaven knows what you guys are going through and how difficult that is. Um, help me understand, when, when, when you see it, when you have a rain event, are you seeing water coming from River Road, down Smith, and then emptying into Colonial?
Well, some of it does, yes, it, it, it builds up, there, there's a, some of it comes from the parking lot on the Acme, they're all pools, right? If you haven't noticed, it's a little lower, right there where they're, uh, from uh. Uh, River Road, it goes down there and then starts going slightly up again to uh Foreman.
And are you aware of any specific drainage from this parking lot into Smith and coming back down?
Well, it seems to, well, it does, it can drain from the uh, where you, where they enter it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Akins?
Nothing, I'm wrong, okay.
If you read the nineteen sixty-eight, um, resolution, they discussed the same problem on Colonial Court.
Yeah, no, it's amazing to read that it was, that, that problem goes that far back.
That's nothing's.
We're ready for the next person, is, is anyone else, is a question or comment?
Can I present um noise?
Come on, come on, come on forward, we're gonna ask you for your name and your address for the record and.
Lois Ofsky, I'm lot fifteen, right here, twenty-two Colonial Court.
Can you spell your last name?
O S O F S K Y.
Okay, and you have some materials that you wanna give, what you submitted to evidence?
I do, um.
Just do this, stick, I'm gonna, let's come forward, you saw him swear a testimony you gave before the board, be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
You do, thank you.
Um, that's the Oprah report from May to October from the Ride Studio for noise citations. It's my understanding that I've reached out to the town multiple times regarding an objective measure for sound, and apparently we don't have one.
Oh, I'm sorry, it, it's an Oprah report that you got from the town.
From the police station for noise citations from the Ride Studio that's in Acme.
Chairman, is this relevant to this application?
Well, we're gonna find out, what, what is the Ride Studio, oh, can, can I ask you to go back to the table?
Um, I guess it's a cycling studio that's in the Acme parking lot.
So where is it, and can you see it on the site plan over there?
Um, it's next to the Ty Linney's studio. So if you know like where the laundernet is along Smith Street.
Okay, so one of the tenants along Smith Street, inside of the Acme Shopping Center. Okay, so one of those tenants is called the Ride Studio.
Correct.
And so you've submitted into evidence noise complaints that are um being called in with regard to that use. And that's because it's similar to the use that's being proposed here?
Um, possibly, my other concern with the use here is that they're gonna be doing outside exercise. So does that mean that I should anticipate runners coming down Colonial Court and down rural areas at five AM?
Well, let's, and so let's make sure, you submitted this into evidence, so what, what specific purpose, and we need to let um. Um, we need to let Mr. Akins take a look at that, so, so what specifically would you like the board to, to understand that to me?
Noise.
Noise, that they're having a noise problem with that.
No, my objection as to relevance, Chairman, board members, I think something off-site that creates a noise condition is not relevant to. What's being proposed this evening, and it was unequivocal on challenge, and then Mr. Duffy said there would be no microphone and no music and no, no noise. One-on-one instruction. So I'm not sure why this Oprah report for an off-site use is relevant to what we're talking about this evening.
She's explained the relevance from her point of view at this point, if I'm, if I'm in.
Yeah, please.
She's explained her concerns with regard to relevance that a nearby location is subject to the, of a noise complaint. She's not saying it's your, your particular application, but she's concerned that if there are gonna be outside activities, that there might be similar noise raised, that's her problems. I, certainly it's subject to questions that you may have about that and or whether or not the judge should consider. Are those complaints for outside activities outside of, of the studio?
No, this is actually contained inside at the moment.
Okay, so they're having a problem there with noise, okay.
Mr. Akins, and this is not, this is somewhat relevant to your question, um. If. If there were enough complaint about the outside user of training outside on a nice day and that sort of thing. Would the applicant be amenable to saying, we don't have any outside training? Um, I know that in other areas, say, you may be abutting a, a business zone, so it doesn't matter, but given the proximity to the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Would there be, and, and I'm not suggesting that it would be, I'm just asking.
The applicant question really tight.
You know what I mean, saying, okay, I'm not gonna have people out, you know, slamming walls in behind the building at, at seven AM, but just as it's a nice day, I'm just, just putting it out there, okay?
Okay, so, so let's.
I, I heard sit-ups and push-ups, which are fairly innocuous, but we can speculate that we won't do that, I. Uh, there's all sorts of. Sure. Absolutely.
Okay, so I, I wanna, I wanna gather the information and get it out so people can understand what your thoughts are. The, the second comment that you made was with regard to people running down Colonial Court?
Right, he said that there would be running. If they're exercising outside, running down the street, running down the sidewalk was mentioned.
Okay.
Um, I'm not aware of any business or exercise studio that opens at five AM, and we do have a quality of life on Colonial Court. Most of us have pets, including dogs, that if that activity is happening at five AM, they will be barking.
What about people that want to go out for a run and not affiliate with bike companies, are they allowed to run on Colonial Court?
We've never had anyone go down Colonial Court.
But someone could.
But see, but I'm.
I drive to work in, at four-thirty in the morning, and there's a group of people that run down Perry Road at four-thirty, I actually have to roll around them.
That's more of a busy, not, you know, it's more of a busy road.
Okay.
I mean, they also run down River Road, but that doesn't.
Did you have anything else?
Um, I also wanted to mention the parking on Smith Street, just to piggyback off my neighbor, that there are trucks that park out there and lanes do not move. Um, also from Acme, going north on that first block, past the Acme, those three cars haven't moved in probably a month and a half, which also poses a hazard because on the opposite side. Um, the arboretum are overgrown, probably three feet into the street. So if this is gonna be a busier intersection, that also poses a problem. Um, we have no one kids to walk down that area to go to the Acme Shopping Center for Duncan, Nicholas, um, the grocery store, lunchtime, they're going to Tommelo. So that also was a very busy intersection and poses a problem. Also poses a problem first thing in the morning, um, for school drop-offs, because there are people that go down Smith Street after they're dropping off their kids. And it poses a problem for people trying to leave their residence.
So, so Smith, Smith Street's a public street, there's parking permitted on Smith. My guess is that the ordinance does not permit overnight parking or leaving cars for a month at a time, I don't know. But, but the relevance, I, I believe to what we're talking about is that there is limited availability currently because of the way it's being used. The, the maintenance issue with regard to the overhang and the rest is relevant because, as it is, as it's maintained, as it's enforced, it's already congested, there's a lot of people here.
Right.
Right, did I draw out of?
Yes.
Okay. Did you have anything more?
Um, also to create maybe a larger buffer from the business in, in the building.
How?
If there's not gonna be parking back there, why can't we put more trees? So they're allowing two, two spots, right from what I heard, the parking back there?
The existing drive.
So they're proposing three shrubs to be planted in the back?
I don't remember where the shrubs were going. I don't remember where the shrubs were going.
Three on the southwest.
Three on the southwest corner.
Exactly. The south line is fairly mature with existing vegetation.
Okay, so so the so the point is that with with the space that's there, there's an opportunity to create. A vegetated buffer where you're not gonna move your buildings, but that that vegetated buffer would provide something akin to. Uh, a greater separation between the commercial and the residential.
Correct.
Okay.
Do you have a, do you have an auxiliary building on your property?
I have a shed.
Yeah, and your shed is in the is adjacent to the lot, to the lot lot.
Right, right.
Okay, so.
So this corner is is potentially is open.
But they're putting, they're putting shrubs. In that area, which don't exist before, and you already, you already have, you already have a an existing building there.
Uh, no, I had clear vision from the deck out, so that's not completely vegetative. Not completely blocked.
Once the tree's there, you won't have vision though, is that right?
I don't know how tall the trees are gonna be.
Right. I think they specified in the CCH, they don't pull this out.
So so Mr. Akins is gonna get an opportunity to 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 react to the to the thoughts that you have. Is there anything more? Was was there anything further? Did the other gentleman wish to provide anything? You're okay?
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Akins, could you hand that exit? Or do you need to rep with you?
I do not.
Hold on.
Come on forward to the microphone and get it.
We have operations from five AM to seven PM. I don't know of any other business in town, and I could be wrong, that starts at five AM. Especially for a residential area.
So, Ms. Akins, was that, were those the hours, five AM until seven PM?
Yes, on Monday through Friday.
Monday through Friday. Saturdays and Sundays.
Seven AM.
Seven to one.
Seven to one.
And and what what do the local ordinances provide with regard to that? Is there any direction from the ordinances? Could you be open twenty-four seven?
That's fine. We we appreciate it because we don't know.
So so I understood the description of when they were gonna be open, when they were gonna be closed, as a description of Mr. Duffy's business. This board isn't being asked to grant any variance, nor do I think we necessarily could with regard to those hours. So I didn't underst- I understood it to be descriptive only. Um, and and we certainly wouldn't be permitting or not permitting them to open or close. Um, and so I I don't know if I've missed vote, but um, I I.
We're not aware of anything more restrictive. So if there's something more restrictive, obviously, we're not proposing to change that or deviate from that. I don't think we could. We'd have to abide by that, so.
So who would have that answer?
Well, it it's a matter, it's so in in the borough ordinances with regard to operational businesses, there's gonna be rules with regard to when they can be open and when they can be closed. And there may or may not be, you know, ordinances with regard to noise. The the issue is that the 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 discussion that we're having relates to a change in use from the bank to the to the studio use. And to the extent that the ordinances permit um these times to be available for the business to be open. Then then that's the standard that applies across the entire area.
But if this is a residential area, the thing wasn't open at five AM?
So this board doesn't have jurisdiction.
Okay.
If you change borough ordinance or to even grant a variance from a board.
So then where could I get that ordinance from?
The with from the borough. Mr. Rizzo, is there anything in the sixty-eight resolution with regard to hours of operation?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
At least I don't think there's any conditions.
And I would wager that the installation of the ATM suggested that that was at twenty-four seven situation.
I'm I'm not sure. Maybe they could wait, and I'm not sure they intend to exercise outside at five AM. I think it's merely.
You just stipulated that we.
Right.
I'm sorry, to be clear, we just stipulated that we would not exercise outside, so that's off the table.
Correct, but but I heard testimony. I don't think it's their function as a.
Correct.
Health and wellness to have people out on the driveway, so I understand the concern, but I think they're concentrating. Just to be a little supportive of running their program within the facility. I think they mentioned no mics, no music. I think they also mentioned it's one-on-one, it's very personal. Now, it's by appointment, it's all major, so I I don't see a lot of increasing traffic like a bank or an ATM. Which must have been constantly like like McDonald's. Um, so. You know, I don't think the use is is fair. I think it hasn't been presented. Um, I mean, I know, started going off track here.
Well, so 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 here's what's relevant to your concerns. The the testimony has been consistent with the idea that there won't be ambient noise outside in relation to what they're doing. The applicant on hearing your concerns, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Akins, has agreed to stipulate that they would not have activities outside at all, period?
You're correct.
Okay, so.
Who's people bring in their own music as well? I mean, I just wanna put a lot of emphasis here, but I live behind this building.
Right, so what it covers is that the the applicant has proffered. That they would agree to a condition where they would not be able tied into the an approval to to operate at all. They would not be able to to do things outside. And with regards to noise, they have proffered that they will not have speakers or microphones or things outside. No, man, if if somebody shows up with a boombox and decides that they're gonna play mus- music from their car into the building. That that wouldn't be part of what we would be trying to control or able. Okay.
So Chairman, just to get back to your question, um, there the times argued in an operational testimony in the sixty-eight resolution. Um, there is no conditions to it, but they do outline a series of of times. Each thirty in the morning.
Business, not a conviction.
Similar to what was test- and and what I'm seeing on 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 Pete's phone is that there is an ordinance with regard to time. It's six AM to open the business and is it eleven to close?
At eleven to.
No business between eleven PM and six AM except.
And I trust Mr. Akins that the applicant would be looking to comply with the local ordinances as they are.
Exactly, that's right.
Okay, anyone else have any questions or comments?
So I'm sure the testimony gave the board, board to be true, the whole truth?
Yes, as I know.
As always.
I have a question first. Well, first I want to thank the columnist for turning the light off. Which is inside of my living room, because I knew how much I needed it until it was turned off, but it's amazing. Anyhow. I have a question. If they are requiring these variances and some of them have already been grandfathered in, is this an occasion where we can resume, rescind? Some of the grandfathered variances that were given previously?
So, so the variance says they are. Is variance to use it for anything other than a bank? So if they're not gonna get a variance to use it for a bank, then they're not gonna be able to use it for a studio and they're they're gonna have to come up with another plan. What they've suggested is that the alternative use for this property would be residential, because it's residentially zone. Um, and they have not proffered what that would be, but uh it.
I don't think you get more than one on there. You've got that.
Hold on, we 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 don't have any of the data that we would need.
I was talking about extraneous things that was.
So so but we've gotta tie right to the variances, right? So there's there's the use, the inability to reuse it for this particular purpose. The other thing related to the signs, the signs on the door and the signs at the street. And so that issue is open uh with regard to how that's going to be, but that is something that they need um approval from us in order to do. And the, you heard about the lot coverage, so if they leave it alone, it's grandfathered as it is. If they reduce it, then we need to give a variance for it. Even though it's moving in the good direction, that triggers variance. Did I miss any, Mr. Rizzo?
It seemed to me, and correct me if I'm wrong, that you were asking if there was an opportunity. To remove any of the variances that were granted in nineteen sixty-eight.
Yes, or or previously. I remember when the lot was had trees, it was vacant, it had trees on it. There was no building there, what, whatever.
But what I was getting to is that that what we're being asked to grant variances for are the limited items that I've just listed for you. The applicant, if if you, have you been here for the entire hearing?
No, I just occurred to Alan.
So so the applicant, as we've gone through some things, has adjusted what he's asked for. And they've made some 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 representations about adjustments and and we've kind of done that. So is there a particular thing about the site that you have proposed to change to make it better?
Well, you can't deny that it's an archive zone.
No one would.
Then basically, the way it is now, it's the camel's nose under the tent. As far as changing, changing residential to commercial or business or whatever.
But that nose has been under the tent for almost sixty years.
Right.
I don't even know what you guys are talking about, okay?
It's slippery slope. It's it's coming off the top of the slippery slippery slope, is what she's saying. And I'm saying it's been, it's it's been over that edge for, you know, like fifty-six years today.
Okay.
That's, okay.
Okay. My comment is, from what I have heard. They want to paint the building or change the face of it so that it's more.
Whitewash. They wanna whitewash it.
Well, whitewash, or you can see it better. My point is, since it's only something that the people go to on appointment, it's not an ice cream store where you've got neon signs and you need to be seen. This is something where you have an appointment and you go, basically pass it.
Okay.
I would like to see them paint it dark and make it recede into the flat rather than stand out.
Interesting point.
Okay.
Okay. And since the cupola appears to have no use whatsoever, take it all. That's my comment.
Mr. Rizzo, is the cupola in the sixty-eight resolution?
Sure. I'd like to see it.
You know, it's not, the Osprey is not.
Like the flag.
Where are you gonna find an Osprey?
Now, they don't get a variance if the Osprey, but the Osprey lands on top of the cupola.
So Mr. Anderson's testimony is that the proposal is to put a weather vane on the top, which is going to have an Osprey on it. The weather vane would spin to the extent that that was actually a question. And the cupola, I, Mr. Rizzo is gonna confirm it, I believe, is covered under sixty-eight resolution.
Yeah, it does.
And and Ms. Blazer's comment with regard to color of the building, the aesthetics, I think is relating to the opportunity to. Try to make the building fit in a little bit more, recede, I think was the right word for it. Um, that that's certainly outside of the scope of what we're being asked to do, but it's it's an interesting comment.
Well, it increases the height.
Sorry?
It does increase the height.
What?
Weather vane.
The weather vane, sure. The weather veins on the table is a proposal. Anyone else with regard to comments or questions?
Sir, they said that they would not be increasing, right?
Excuse me, sir?
The testimony was that the height would not be increased.
Of the cupola, but the weather vane's on top of the cupola, and I don't think it exists now, does it? It does not exist now. Ms. Blazer, I'm happy to 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 put that on, but you gotta, we gotta be able to pick it up in the mic.
I think the cupola exceeds the height limit.
I think it does.
And that's why I say it deserves no possible purpose other than aesthetic, gonna be taken on.
Okay.
All right.
I.
And I have a picture, sort of, you know, we're talking about water running down. I've got a picture of River Road when it's flooded with the. Side of the bank building here, giving you some idea of how much flooding there is on River Road in a downfall.
We can't.
Is there any way to get back?
Into.
That's the front.
Evidence. We can't keep your phone.
You want to forward it?
You wanna? Alan, if you take a screenshot of it.
If the water comes back, it's gonna feed up on my front wall.
So hold on, hold on, hold on. I I wanna. Mr. Akins?
Yeah.
So so the, hold on, is that from your house?
That's from my house.
Okay, so you're looking out towards River Road and that's the bank across the street?
Here's the bank, the brick, the red.
You show it to Mr. Akins.
Certainly.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you all to quiet down, please, if 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 you're exiting, that's. I'm gonna try to continue. Thank you, Mr. Blazer. Is there anyone else that has any questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, can I just uh jump in because it came up, the the height. In my opinion, is increasing, yeah, how they understand that. Um, there's a section that says cupola and similar small structures built on top of roofs should not exceed. Four feet deep, four feet wide, and six feet high. This is an existing condition. And I think this is being exceeded now, if there are increase in height for the better reason.
So. So it it needs to be confirmed that the cupola is in a resolution. I believe I read it in sixty-eight.
It is in the resolution.
Okay, it's in the resolution. And and so.
Ask which paragraph, Mr. Rizzo.
On page fifty-nine.
So the technical question is whether or not adding the weather vane can be done um without exceeding the height or whether that's a permitted. Um, accessory that would not technically trigger a variance. But if it if it triggers variance, then it's a variance.
Right.
And and that's, that's easy enough for the board to to talk about. Okay, um.
Yeah, we don't want the applications to rise or fall on. And 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 accoutrement like the weather, respectful.
Um, are there any other questions or comments from the audience? Okay, let the record reflect, there's no further comments.
That's just.
Chairman, I think we uh we need to come back to signage and I can't, you know, I can't. Feel comfortable trying to workshop that at this hour, you know, three and a half hours into the hearing. Um, I I I don't recall there are other issues that uh that merited our attention. Um, maybe relooking at the landscaping at the 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 front facade there that we talked about. And uh some of the uh the window tinting, I think, was from the comments that was issued. Um, let's see what else we have.
Okay. Okay. Um, I'm interested in. How the board members are feeling about where we are. I think that there are open issues with regard to some of the things that we've talked about that don't warrant being squeezed in at this moment. Um, but I'm wondering, as we've gone through it. I'm gonna tell you where I'm at, and I'm interested in hearing where you guys are at because I think it would be a benefit to the applicant. I have concerns about the parking lot. I have concerns about the second user. However, the applicant stipulated early tonight. That the requested approval is gonna be for Mr. Duffy and only for Mr. Dustin. Mr. Duffy's use of the parking is not gonna be the same thing as a dance studio or some other things because of the way he operates his bill, uh, his business. That frees up other parking to the extent that it is, it is tethered to the approval that he uses it in that manner. The second story is very slim. And the the second user was a concern for me coming in and trying to evaluate whether or not the parking could actually accommodate it. But combined with Mr. Duffy's limited use of that parking. The size of that stairs, I'm recognizing the utility of it, and I I I think I've come around to the idea, this is where I'm at.
I do have one question on the parking that might be Jordan answered. If if it were to be a bank today, what would the parking? What would the parking requirement be?
Like, it would be on square footage, right?
It would be square footage. It would be square footage. Banks are also one space per two hundred square feet. Plus the room for twelve automobiles per driving, so just well, two main. Well, they're not necessarily parking spaces.
So, so the sixty eight approval required twenty two spaces off-site with regard to this particular bank's operation. The parking with regard to office is slightly less than studio. Um, and so the, if if it's all studio and a single user, the parking requirements are nineteen.
Yes, okay, yes.
What is sixteen, huh?
Okay, thank you. Um, and with regard to the upstairs, if that were to be office, that would reduce it, did it reduce all the sixteen or?
No, so fifteen of the entire buildings on. Calculated what this split would be.
It was six hundred and six, six seventy five upstairs? Mr. Anderson, do you remember what it was, six seven upstairs?
Upstairs, second floor, yeah.
Six seventy, six seventy four is the usable space.
Oh, you have to count.
So eleven oh, eleven oh two. One for two fifty, so five, right?
Just, can we just ask the architect to step forward just a second?
The architect?
Did you need to calculate the spaceways? The square footage, how did you pack it, the interior, the new walls, to the height of the eight?
There should be on the plans and the rail. Did it should give a graphic depiction of it on the plan? Well, do you have the bigger plans, it might be easier to see.
I'm just asking the question, how did you do it?
We we call, there there was in the code. Uh, I I don't have the code in front of me, right, that's right. Um, but it's graphically. Gosh, it's, I don't believe they have full scale of the plans.
Floor area diagram says eleven oh two, but that includes all the mechanical space.
And I believe that's broken down by six seventy four for the um, habitable part and four twenty eight for the mechanical.
But Mr. Akins, did you calculate the entire second story when you calculated your parking requirements to nineteen?
He did, yes. Yes, and and I'm a bit conservative, yes.
Including that mechanical space.
Yeah.
I see, I see.
The exterior color of those.
Right.
Okay, so look, so here here's the relevance of 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 me sharing with you where I was. Um, what what I think is still lack, lacking in my mind is a vision of exactly how this is going to look when it's, when it's done. As I look at what Mr. Anderson draws for the front, I like the flag, I like the cupola, I like the Osprey. I like the whitewash, I like all of them, I don't like the sign, I don't particularly like the lighting. I'd just like to spend more time with it. It's clear to me that the applicant is is comfortable working with us to try and figure it out and get it right. I'm confident that if we do it right, that the project overall is is gonna feel better. Um, I start at reusing this building, right? I I'm not, I'm not actually coming in expecting um, that that it's a tremendous leap to get to figuring out how to get a new user in here. The question is what's around the margins. What I'm interested in knowing from you guys is to the extent that I'm missing something or your concerns that haven't been raised, want the applicant to know that. Because if we're not finishing now, I want them to be able to take those thoughts with them when they go home, and I'm gonna vote on anything now, because we have to get it all done. But if there's things outside of the margins of what I've just talked about that you want them to think about, let's let them know now.
The only thing, I mean, I think as far as the fingers, I think it's a less intense issue than the bank was to me, I think it's a really good idea and a really good plan. I made the comment about the outside doors because of the, you know. Uh, the proximity to residential, it's like here in, I think the biggest issue is, and I like the way it looks, I like everything about it. The biggest issue I have is the sign isn't the light. We've mitigated some of the lighting in the, you know, the corner issue and that sort of thing. Signage and some of the front lighting is really the only thing that I'm focused on. Yeah, I I I think the parking is, honestly, I think the parking is sufficient for the use.
I I I think the uh, I think the parking is adequate to the use. I think that I live on Grange, uh, that's a loop of exactly one mile. People run it all the time, early in the morning and late at night. Uh, I don't think you can keep people from running on your street, I mean, I think that's you know, that's their prerogative. Uh, I'm a little concerned about about this drainage on uh, on on that additional street on Cleone, but I I don't, I don't see that that relates to this particular uh, project. I like, frankly, I like every aspect of it except the sign. I'm not, I'm not comfortable with the sign.
I mean, I didn't hear anything as far as the drainage was concerned about where the leaders from the roof go or anything like that, but also that nineteen sixty eight uh, resolution said that in the future, that the borough could reevaluate whether they need to put in a uh, dry well in the in the front there or.
In the area of compliance as to whether or not there's any requests made.
Right, we don't.
Going back to the.
But then it was considered in the resolution and and spelled out in the resolution that you know, that might be something to come back to even back then.
So I I feel super strongly that we need to be tied to the sixty eight resolution, and if there's seventeen resolution, I haven't even seen it. Um, i- if you're within your rights to reuse that sign because that's the analysis, then then that's your within your rights. I I think that as we look at it as it's gonna be that I I I know the discussions about planning in towns, I know that nobody's thinking about building the PNC-like signs, I know what, I know what people wanna see the direction moving to. I I think the sign can be left, but with.
But it can be left, but they're talking about adding to.
I I I understand. And I, well, they they pulled that off the table, I I I have no idea what a sign costs. And so if this is a hundred dollar item, I'd actually like to move that, but but the drainage thing is really important to me.
And at the time, back in sixty eight, their best practices seemed to have been to push it all out to River Road so we go into the storm drains there. That's the opposite of what we do now.
There's no question that if there's sheet flow going to Smith, it's contributing to the problem, and it, I don't know the answer to that. But I believe that the original development was sensitive to the idea that that was a problem, they didn't want this to contribute to it. I don't know what the situation is or what's possible. I I recognize that without proposing a brand new parking lot, adjusting things that are expensive is something that we we should not take lightly, but I I I personally think it's important that we understand it, and that if there's an opportunity to put one of those um, drains that go at the entrance, if it's going out Smith Street, maybe it can be captured. May- maybe there can be a speed bump put there so that it can't go that way. And it just goes out to river, and this laser shows us the river's not really ready for it either, but it's no, it's certainly much worse on Cleone. And if there's anything we can do to minimize that, we should do it.
So, uh, Chairman, board members, at the risk of interrupting, for which I apologize, I did review the sixty eight conditions, and I think we can comply with all of them, including the one that says that if the borough engineer in her or his discretion uh, requires uh, onsite dry wells or additional catch bases on River Road, then the, you know, we would the approval requires that to be done by the applicant, now us, we can certainly stipulate as to that. None of the other conditions are problematic. It says five feet on the fence, we propose six feet, that creates the variance. I would propose that we drop the sign entirely, come back to that another day so that we can have a vote this evening on the use and and the uh, the minor site plan that's proposed, because we're, we're at that point, and looking at these conditions. I don't think any of them are insurmountable, could stipulate to all the, um, and 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 as to the lighting, we work with the board's planner and the board engineer to develop an appropriate lighting plan.
So I I I'm not really trying to get you there, uh, how would you propose to bifurcate? Because how would we?
Bring bring a new sign application when we're, when we're at that point.
No sign?
No sign, right, that the uh, the this, the the sign right now that's there has to come down as as a condition of this approval.
And what about the lighting?
The lighting would be a, would be a condition of any approval to work with your professionals and our lighting professionals, engineering professionals.
The window sign?
No, that would, that would, the, the, I'm talking about the freestanding, just the freestanding sign.
I I'm, I'm uncomfortable not giving the lighting adequate attention. Uh, but I'm wondering if, I'm wondering if we could stipulate that there's no lighting added, the exterior lights.
It could be part of the signage application if they wanna come back and apply for lighting. I mean, they've already agreed to remove this light here at the driveway.
And the ones on the west side.
On the west side, what else do we have to talk about?
And the lighting is now going down.
I mean, the flag lighting is okay, and he said.
Well, but here's the thing, the the, but both the flag and the sign is that are lit right now, it's very commercial, it really, it really is. But the other thing is it's falling into disrepair, and so the the sense that we have of it today isn't necessarily what it would be when the applicant will be done putting in what he wants, but if we haven't been able to to really spend time talking about it, we have spent a lot of time.
I do agree, what's there, Mr. Akins, I think we're close to be able, to being able to.
There was someone's suggestion earlier that if the flag stays and remains lit, it remains lit with the back of the light fixture facing River Road and the light illuminating towards the bank, so at least, at the very least, it's not impeding upon the light pollution of the other people.
Can can I make another, what if, what if, what if we set a special up? Because we're jammed up for the next few months anyway, what what if we set a special up and we try and get you back here within the next four weeks and we just finish it all? I I purposely hold the board because I wanted you to get a sense of where they were. I I'm hesitant, I don't know how everybody else feels, I I'm hesitant to say you're okay with the two users, you're okay with the parking, and then leaving the rest of it for fear that it won't get adjusted the way it should be adjusted. Uh, i- i- if I felt, if I felt like I'd like to do it all together.
Yeah, in fairness to you, I'm trying to envision how I'm going to fashion this resolution without putting my engine, it sort of ties you up. Not that I don't believe the applicant, not that I don't have great faith in you, but I'm trying to figure out how I'm going to put it in a condition that, that won't choke you. You know, cut to cover the board, but not.
But you you could live without the sign, so you could live without the sign, or I think everybody could throw with that, frankly. And it it if you came back, assuming you did come back, I'm sure we could work it out. I I, the the lighting is, it's just kinda, it's not quite.
Why don't we remove all lighting then? We'll remove all lighting.
Everything, come back with a new lighting?
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna come back for a sign anyway, so we'll come back for lighting, we'll take all the lighting off the table, so there's no lighting. Nobody could possibly complain about any lighting if we remove it all. As a practical matter, we're not gonna open up without coming back and providing a lighting plan, and certainly providing a sign. We'll be here under the umbrella of a sign, new sign, but we'll also provide a lighting plan, and and then that can be vetted, because those are really the only two issues that are, that we're left with, and I think we're otherwise on the on the cusp of being able to have the vote, Chairman, board members. I think everybody's worked very hard for this.
For the amount of discussion that we've had about the lighting, and certainly the amount of discussion that we had about the lighting in the first meeting, I'm surprised that we don't have a lighting.
Well, well, we 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 made revisions, we provided the testimony.
They're like, lighting plans that just shows the lighting on the ground. And it also shows the opposite.
I think there's a, I think there's a perception, again respectfully, that the lighting is a bigger issue than it is. Take it all off the table, no lighting. Now it's a practical matter, we're gonna want some lighting, so we'll come back, and that's when we'll work with your professionals, it's really a technical issue.
I I understand, Mr. Akins, and I'm, I'm, I hope it's translating, I I I wanna help you, because it's, it's been hanging out there a while.
Okay.
I I am, I am, I am contemplating what happens if you never come back again.
We can't open up. Because you're gonna require us to come back, the lighting plan is a condition of approval. We'll subsume that with the, with the, we certainly want a sign. Representing to you that we want a sign, we're not gonna operate without a sign, but we have to come back for that.
I don't know if you need a sign to open up, and I'm not sure that you need lights to open up, and and I'm not sure that at the end of the day that 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 we could not live with that if that's what it was, we would have to be able to live with what would happen. I was not assuming that we would condition you opening on getting back before you, because I don't know what the standard is. So, but the other piece of that is, is is sixty eight resolution and whatever the other subsequent ones are, and that drainage issue, and so just as to that, would you be comfortable with the idea that there's going to be an engineering review?
Yes.
And that that's going to be addressed?
I read the condition to confer with my client. I'm, I accept this condition with your request, except all the conditions that are relevant here from the sixty eight resolution, in particular the one relating to the drainage.
Is there, is there anything with regard to the landscaping that's open? Is is there, um, is there any room back there to put a tree back there for her? How did we come up with three bushes there? We haven't talked about it. Is that?
I have some recommendations for what they can do to upgrade that.
So we stipulate to work with your planner as to the recommendations.
I don't just want that discussion here, I I want it here, I I wanna be able to talk about it, and I wanna be able to do it.
All right.
Okay, can, can we leave open the landscaping, leave open the lighting, leave open the signs? And and get some drainage stuff together so that we can look at it all together? We're all good with that? It's it's weird to approve it and then condition that they come back. Is, is that the right way to do it?
You could also, Chairman, I could move to bifurcate the application, just if you just vote on the use. And then come back to the site, the site, the site plan remains open.
Site plan is still here if we approved the use, does it go?
You retain jurisdiction. Absolutely.
So with regard to, with regard to D, this is the way, this is the way I'm seeing it. We're tethering, we're tethering the first floor usage to Duffy. The second floor usage is the second unit. It is, there's no more demising walls, it's just an open space. It's either studio or it's office. There's no specific user.
It's a single user.
And 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 what I would wanna see in the, in in an approval is tethering those things together. If if the Duffy situation changes and we need to start over again, that second story needs to be understood in connection with that first story. It it's like these two uses together or come back and look at it, all of it.
That's fine.
Sounds like a motion.
I I don't wanna push anybody further than they wanna be, I just recognize how important it is for them to get a piece of it done and the biggest piece of it done, but.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't tell it, but I'm okay on the use, I'm okay on the parking, I'm okay. Um, it's this small sign up front that I'm not. I don't think it's in keeping with the town, I don't think it's in keeping with an opportunity, you've got an opportunity here to change that, I think you've done a great job on everything else. Clearly, the applicant is committed to working with us, to working in the town and doing good work. Um, so.
What do you think?
I think, I think we can move.
No, I was gonna say, I was gonna say, I appreciate your willingness to I've done a lot of adaptive reuse, it's not easy. Done a solid building, it's a very nice building, I think everyone here is just hung up on, and especially me on the sign and some other items, but we appreciate you willing to work with us, and I think you're gonna do a great job, and it's gonna be really nice, so.
Are you good with with a vote with regard to the use?
I I am, yeah, sorry.
And 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 retaining jurisdiction of the site?
Correct, yes, yes, I am.
Sure, sure. Everybody else is good, I'll make the motion. Uh, motion is to approve the D one variance. Um, did you get what I said before, or do I need to try and?
No, I got it. Second.
So it's, so it's the Duffy usage. Upstairs is open, it's office or studio, it's a second unit, but they're tied together. To the extent that there is a change of downstairs unit, then that brings the upstairs unit back in favor. The site plan remains open. That's the motion, and we retain your jurisdiction, and we retain your jurisdiction. And we're not gonna need a special, but that's gonna take a little bit of time, right?
Correct, no special. We take, take the time to do the, we need side detail, we need lighting detail, we wanna touch it once, we want you to touch it once.
Yeah, it could be three months.
Hopefully not three months.
Okay, you only, you you can touch things that don't relate to what we're talking about, it seems to me. All right, but okay. All right, uh, I made the motion, I didn't hear a second, skip some. Don't go out in those cameras. Any further discussion on the motion? Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah. Yes.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. We look forward to the, uh, the next aspect. Chairman, if we happen to finish our plans early, it might be, see with the special?
Tell us when you're ready, let's look at where we're at. We're gonna need another sixty to ninety minutes, I would assume. If we got half the meeting before you, we're gonna give it to you. If we have to create a special, then we'll create a special.
Happy to do so. Thank you so much. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, all of you. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, after talking.
Couple of quickies, um, minutes from the January fourth meeting, I have reviewed and submitted the changes. Uh, I will make a motion to approve the minutes from January fourth. Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, resolution for the contract of board planner, now having reviewed, I will make a motion to approve the contract of the board planner, Mr. Davis.
Mr. McFadden?
Yes. Yes.
Buckler?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah.
Contract of board currently hasn't been reviewed, I make a motion to approve the contract for the board attorney.
What, what'd you do, Doug? Give me the same contract? Do some same words, all of it? All right. Uh, I'll sign it tonight.
Mr. McFadden?
Yes. Yes.
Four time?
Yeah, good night.
Yeah.
Thanks, Chairman. Yes.
Uh, finally, board engineers contract, uh, having reviewed, I will make motion to approve them. Sorry, I'm real quick, Mr. Chairman. The contract we submitted, um, is our standard contract, from what I'm assuming. We understand you're probably gonna wanna follow the borough's contract next year.
We had a contract review last year, you can't just use the same contract?
No, we can't, that's what I'm proposing. We didn't submit this, it wasn't our contract, but. I thought the twenty twenty-four contract is the same as twenty twenty-three contract. It, and no objection to that, that's what I'm proposing.
So that's good, I'll sign that, but it is, that doesn't exist tonight.
But I don't have that tonight.
It wasn't our.
You're good. You can stay. So we need to vote on the resolution or not?
Yes, you'd still vote on the resolution.
Uh, Mr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngel, yes. Mr. Ridgeway?
Yes.
Four time?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. That's it, is that all but on the agenda?
That's it.
We still got your special for the other meeting.
Yeah, the only other, I don't know, uh, email about was the scheduling for the pay-a-lot and the.
So the whispering ones for Payola, Peter and I are out of that, but there was correspondence today saying that they're interested in getting it set, and we have some dates. She has got them, right?
Very well, yeah, well.
Mike gave you a bunch, and so are you all sitting on there? You all want to figure out a couple of dates we can give out?
It's just, um, you just sent it this afternoon.
I saw your email.
Yeah, but then you, um, there was some additional correspondence that was after, yeah.
Do we need to do it at the meeting to set it up, or can it be done by email tomorrow that they?
It can be done by email tomorrow.
Sure. All right, let's, let's do it that way.
Because they're still gonna have to give their notices once we decide.
Five? Five?
Five, one.
Of us. Seven of us present?
It's a D, it's a D, it's a D. You need seven.
Seven. And the question was, did we, I watched, I watched the, the.
You did.
The hearings, yes.
I just see if there's a. I thought Mike Irene sent me.
Did everybody see the first one?
I don't know what you need to, to re-review, I think.
I think because I wasn't there, so I had to watch it. And, and I think maybe.
But they're doing it again.
But they're doing it anew, because they're doing it yourself.
But either way, you saw it.
But you just.
I, I watched a lot of it too, I mean, you watched all of it? Uh, John, you were there?
No, I was there.
She was there?
I was there.
Okay, so tomorrow, she will circulate the dates. You gotta do that awkward thing of trying to figure out dates that work for everybody. Um, we, did the dates that Mr. Irene shared with us, did you agree on it then? The attorney on the other side?
No, I just saw them tonight when I came in.
No, well, that's the first thing that needs to happen. Okay, so tomorrow, send those to her. Tell her those are, those are Michael's available dates. Tell her to give us whatever dates work for her, and then, and, but then we have to pre-circulate it before those dates fill out to either one of them, and then you gotta get all seven to agree on that date, because they need seven to be able to vote five. If you have questions, just reach out to me or me, but not next week, because I'm all for that. Good to be ordered, Susan? Nothing, you got it.
Okay, I'll be, I'll, I'll.
Nothing from the public?
Motion, Attorney.
Motion, Attorney, are in all favor?
Thank you, Tom.